Good morning and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, November the 10th. My name is John French and while I am not the acting mayor, I am next in line. Armin Herper, who is the acting mayor, is having technical challenges connecting with us this morning. So we'll be proceeding with me as chair. And as always, welcome to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. And I'll start with staff recommendation that we adopt the agenda for today's Committee of the Whole Meeting. Do I have a mover? Counselor Race, seconded by Counselor Stoner. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? None. Motion carries. And our second order of business is Ministerial Order M192. And the staff recommendation is that pursuant to Ministerial Order Number M192, the District of Squamish is excluding in-person public attendance at this November 10th, 2020 meeting on the basis that full public attendance in a manner consistent with public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time. And the district is ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability at this meeting by the following means. It is being livestreamed and a video of this meeting will be available on the district's website for viewing on an on-demand basis. Is there a mover of that motion? Counselor Stoner, seconded by Counselor Penningill. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? None. Motion carries. And there is a statement that I need to share with everybody that talks about participation in today's meeting. And I think that it's this. Members of council may participate electronically at a regular council, special council and council committee meeting by means of audiovisual or audio-electronic communication devices. Any member of council intending to participate electronically should provide as much notice as possible. Members of council participating electronically may choose to call in speakerphone immediately prior to commencement of the meeting. The section I'm looking for talks about being on mute. Robin, do you, do I have it here?
Yes, it's all there.
Okay. Here we go. Council members attending the meeting electronically are required to advise the chair of the meeting of the following circumstances. A, when the council member disconnects and/or reconnects, enters or exits the meeting, so that this can be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. B, council members are to identify themselves when they advise the chair what they wish to be placed on the speakers list. And C, with respect to a vote, members are only required to state a nay vote. No statement is required if the member is in favor. D, council members shall put the telephone or computer on mute unless they wish to speak. Council members shall be involved in and participate in the meeting. Council members shall text the chief administrative officer or the corporate officer if they have technical difficulty with their telephone or computer. And finally, the meeting shall be recessed for up to 10 minutes if a technical difficulty occurs on the district side, which results in the council member being unable to connect to the meeting. And with that, we'll move to staff reports. And the first report this morning is on the Eagle Viewing Area, CHM Reserve Dyke Master Plan. And I believe David Rolston, the manager of municipal infrastructure, will be guiding us through this presentation. David?
Good morning, acting chairman of council. My name is David Rolston. I'm the manager of municipal infrastructure for the District of Squamish and I am co-presenting with Amir Talagani, a water resources engineer with Kurod Lidl Associates. So I'm pleased to be presenting the Eagle Viewing Area and CHM Reserve Dyke Master Plan today and seeking council's endorsement of the final plan, project to endorsement of the plan by Squamish Nation Council when they present on Thursday of this week. I'll provide some quick highlights of the project before handing it over to Amir, who will present an overview of the project and the key recommendations. This project has been fully grant-funded through the National Disaster Mitigation Program and has been a groundbreaking and unique project in terms of our collaboration and partnership with Squamish Nation. The project has been guided by a steering committee comprised of district and Squamish Nation staff and councillors, as well as a staff member from Indigenous Services Canada. We've engaged extensively with the community through in-person and virtual workshops and meetings, several online surveys, an open house, and presentations to both district and Squamish Nation councils in February of this year. The project is very significant in its scale, the impact it will have on shaping the community and enhancing its resiliency to flooding. The project is also important in terms of reconciliation efforts with Squamish Nation over historic dyke construction practices. The plan's recommendations are wide-ranging and ultimately seek to address a critical weakness in the Squamish River Dyke, which poses a threat to hundreds of homes, businesses, and critical infrastructure in Brockendale and the Garibaldi Estates. If endorsed, the district and Squamish Nation will be working on implementing this plan for many years to come. And so this plan provides critical guidance and a vision for the area to be working towards. As a brief reminder, both District of Squamish and Squamish Nation councils unanimously endorsed a new dyke alignment at the CHM Reserve in order to allow recapture of historic reserve land. Since then, the project team has been working to complete final engagement, develop a concept dyke design, a public amenity plan, and prepare the final plan that we'll be presenting today. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Amir for his presentation.
Okay, thank you, David. Hi, everyone. And hopefully my screen is being shared now. I believe it is. And I'll, thank you. I'll provide about a 20-minute presentation.
Amir, I don't see that your screen is being shared at my end. And I just get a confirmation that... Okay, very good. Carry on, Amir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the purpose of the Dyke Master Plan is to identify the preferred dyke-upgrading concept and the actions required to implement it. In this overview presentation, I'll go through some of the background information following up on the February 2020 council presentation, discuss the process for the master plan, and go through the progress we've made, including the work that was done since February, present the final round of engagement results, and just go through the implementation actions. So first, on background information. The District of Squamish's Integrated Flood-Hazard Management Plan was really the foundation for this work. As you all know, Squamish faces river, coastal, and dyke breach hazards and conducted an IFHMP from 2014 to 2017. And one of the key outcomes was that there needs to be a master plan conducted for the Eagle Viewing slash CHM Reserve area. So here is the study area and I want to just go through some of the features briefly. So when the project originally started, we were looking from south to north, from the edge of the Cautaine Reserve to the north end of the CHM Reserve. Through the project and through the engagement and working with the steering community, the study area was expanded and now goes up to Fisherman's Park. So some of the features I want to point out are the existing dyke, which you can see as a brown line, and it goes along the Eagle Viewing Area. As you know, it goes through the CHM Reserve without land tenure, without a right-of-way for dyking. And then it continues on through essentially the backyards of the properties along Eagle Run Drive until it reaches Fisherman's Park and eventually continues into the Aquox Reserve. I want to point out the existing CHM Reserve boundaries in the pink hatched lines. You can see that there's two parcels and we'll talk about that in a second. Government road runs on the east side of the river. And just want to point out, and we'll talk about it, that it runs through a portion of CHM Reserve without land tenure as well. So getting back to what we talked about in February, looking at the history of the CHM Reserve and the land loss that's occurred there, it's a very important feature of this project to acknowledge. So this image on the screen is one of the oldest maps from the Government of Canada of the reserves in the Squamish area. And you can see that it shows the Squamish River, which I've highlighted. And to the east of it, there are two land parcels that are the CHM Reserve or that were the CHM Reserve at that time. And the total land area was about 68 acres or 27.5 hectares. Now, what we have as the CHM Reserve is only 9.8 hectares. So that's much smaller than it was mapped in 1881. And what happened was that the river shifted. I think it's nice to bring this back up again. For background context, these three images show mapping of the Squamish River in 1918, 1949, and 2008, which is generally what it looks like today. And on each image, the red arrow is pointing to approximately the same location. And what I want to point out is that in 1918, on the earliest map, we can see that the river main channel is on the left side or the west side of that red arrow. And then as we go forward in time, in 1949, it looks like the river main channel has shifted or is in transition. And it's getting further to the right side of that arrow and it's eroding what was the CHM Reserve at that time. And then in 2008, we can see that the main channel shifted over. Some of that land has redeposited, but the main channel is on the right side of that arrow and the river has shifted. And that really explains what's happened to the CHM Reserve. So the river moved, the land was eroded, and it was not added back to the reserve boundary. Now to go through some of the process of the project and provide a progress of where we're at today. So this project started in August 2019 and it started with creating a project website to inform the community, Squamish Nation and stakeholders that the project was starting. And there was an initial survey to gather values and general comments. The project was run through a steering committee that includes both district and nation staff and councillors and members. And that steering committee worked together with the consulting team to identify a set of common interests that I'll show in a moment. From then, there was brainstorming of potential flood protection concepts and options, which led to shortlisting of three flood protection concepts, primarily in the CHM2 Fisherman's Park Reach. And in last fall, in November, December 2019, those shortlisted options were taken up for engagement with the community, with specific groups, and with Squamish Nation. Following that, in early 2020, there was additional work done on cost estimates and other feasibility issues. And we came to both district and nation council in February 2020, where the preferred dyke concept was endorsed for additional study. Following that work, we went away and we prepared the draft master plan with implementation actions. And we conducted a final round of engagement on that that I will review and present the results of. And now we're near the end of this process. We have a final master plan that we're bringing to district council today and Squamish Nation Council on Thursday. And I just want to highlight that what's not included in this project, what is future work, are additional studies, the implementation steps that we'll go through, and of course, any work on gathering the funding, working through the permitting, additional engagement, and ultimately, construction and operation. That's all future work. So I mentioned that the project was progressed through a series of common interests that were used as a lens to look at options. These are common between the nation and the district as developed by the steering committee. Just want to read them just to set the foundation for the rest of the project. To address flood risk and public safety, recapture Squamish Nation land and enable beneficial use of it, optimize project costs, minimize impacts to the environment, address immediate flood risk while enabling long-term approaches. And that really talks about the Squamish Nations' expressed interest in investigating eventual potential river realignment, which was somewhat related to the Dyke Master Plan, acknowledging and reflecting site history and culture in the design and the implementation of the master plan, and finally, enabling future collaboration on resolving dyke and path access issues that exist today. After the interests were developed and brainstorming was done, these shortlisted options were developed and were taken out for community and Squamish Nation and other stakeholder engagements. So just a refresher on these. We can see that in the Eagle Viewing Area, only one option was shortlisted, and that is just to raise the existing dyke more or less on its existing alignment and to expand the footprint where needed towards government road while maintaining or enhancing the public amenity features that are there today. Between CHM Reach, between CHM Reserve and Fisherman's Park, there were three options. So one was that the existing dyke alignment be raised and that would involve, that's the red line that's labeled A, that would involve using retaining walls, which would not enable any land recapture and would further limit the beneficial use of the reserve and the residents there. Another option was Option B, which is the blue polygon there shown on the screen. And that would involve actually filling the reserve land grade up to the dyke crest elevation. And that would have an even larger impact to the reserve and residents because it would involve displacing them temporarily to fill up the land. And both that Option A and B, red and blue as shown on the screen, come with the assumption that the district would upgrade the existing Eagle Run Drive from the north end of the CHM Reserve all the way to Fisherman's Park. And while that was added as an additional piece of the project, we want to acknowledge that that would be a very challenging dyke raise itself because that dyke runs in between private property and Jimmy Jimmy Judd Slough. So there would be private property impacts on one side and environmental impacts to the slough on the other side. A third option that was ultimately selected as the preferred option is Option C, which is shown on the yellow line. So this would be a new dyke alignment extending from the south end of CHM Reserve all the way to Fisherman's Park. And I'll speak more about the details of that in a moment. Just want to go through the engagement on the shortlisted options. So there was one public open house held at the Adventure Center on December 5th, 2019. There was three targeted meetings for CHM residents, private landowners off reserve, and community groups that were held in November. There was a second online survey that was held around December as well. And there was some written correspondence with regulators, including Province of B.C., parks, that includes B.C. Parks and the Inspector of Dykes Office, and also Fisheries and Oceans Canada. So this shows again highlighting the preferred option. So that is Option C and Option EVA, which is to raise the existing dyke in the Eagle Viewing Area. And just going through the process, how this was selected was that it was selected at a steering committee meeting and then it was endorsed by district council on February 11th and by nation council on February 13th, 2020. Zooming in on the new dyke alignment and talking about some of the features, on this image, we can see in black the proposed new dyke alignment. You can see the existing CHM Reserve outline in red again as well. You can see in a white thick line the existing dyke alignment and those text box arrows point to the three drainage facilities that exist on the existing dyke. So that's the Judd Slough Pump Station, the Horse Creek Flood Box, and the small Eagle Run Drive Pump Station. The new dyke alignment, the black line, would replace the existing Eagle Run Drive dyke. And a new fish-friendly pump station and flood box is proposed at the outlet of Jimmy Jimmy Judd Slough. And that new pump station facility and flood box would replace the three existing structures that are on the Eagle Run Drive dyke. So it would, one new pump station and flood box would replace those three facilities. Major feature of this option is that it would enable land recapture and beneficial use for the Squamish Nation. So the yellow polygon shown on this slide shows the area that's proposed for the Squamish Nation to recapture. And that includes both what's historic reserve land and other unceded land. There are three private property parcels regulated by the district on the north side of that polygon. And another major feature to point out is that the new dyke alignment would partially disconnect the forested area that's in between the existing dyke and the proposed dyke from the flood plain. It's partially disconnection because of the pump station and flood box at the mouth of Jimmy Jimmy Judd Slough. So during normal water level conditions, the flood box would be open and water would flow freely between Judd Slough and into that area behind it. And during flood conditions, it would be closed. And if there was a need for pumping, it would pump. We've heard concerns about potential environmental impacts from this partial disconnection. And one of the key next implementation steps is to study the hydraulic and environmental value of that vegetated island that's being proposed for a partial disconnection. So further work needs to be done to understand how often it's inundated and that would enable to understand the fish value that's available and would enable designers to come up with potential mitigation measures. When we visited council in February, we talked about costs. Just want to present these again. These are the cost estimates for the preferred dyke option. And we've broken them out with and without ground improvement works. As a reminder, ground improvement works are required by the Province of B.C. for seismic performance of dykes. The current guidelines the province has are strict and difficult to meet and increase costs significantly. And it's a large area of uncertainty. So that's why we presented with and without the ground improvement costs. So without ground improvement costs, the cost in the Fisherman's Park to CHM Reach, that's the new dyke alignment, would be about $60 million capital cost. And the Eagle Viewing Area would be $15 million for a sum of about $75 million. When we add in the ground improvement works, that increases to about $114 million. Moving on from the dyking, I want to talk about some of the other features of the master plan. One of them is the government road condition. And as I mentioned earlier, a portion of government road runs through CHM Reserve without a right-of-way. And on the slide, that's shown in the yellow strip polygon that you can see. And you can see that it's thicker down at the south and thinner at the top. So there's more of a trespass or more of an encroachment at the south end. As part of the master plan, a high-level early concept for relocating government road to address this trespass was developed. And that's now shown on the screen. So as you can imagine, it's a simple shift to the east and changing of the curves to make the road design work. And the assumption that was made for the high-level concept was that there would be two traffic lanes and bike lanes on both sides. And I just want to stress that this is a very high-level concept that needs additional work. But it would involve shifting the road onto the private properties that are along the east side of what's government road right now. So there would need to be some additional administrative and land tenure processes there. Do want to also point out that there are, there is already an existing standard sewer line that runs through those properties. So the district does have a right-of-way, I believe, for the sewer through that area. And finally, I want to really highlight the Eagle Viewing Area Public Amenity Plan. It's something that we didn't get a chance to discuss too much when this was at council in February, but it is a major part of the project. And that was refined after the preferred concept was developed. So this is an illustrative plan. It's not a final plan, but features from this plan can be incorporated into future design phases. And it does incorporate that government road realignment. So a number of items I want to point out, and they're numbered on the screen. So we can see number three at the top. That's government road realignment. Number four, that will zoom in in a moment, is the main amenity area and improved parking concept. Driving Creek Pump Station is imagined as an area that can be a public amenity as well in addition to just a pump station in the future. The Eagle Watch Shelter and Seating is proposed to be maintained or enhanced with a decision in the future about that. An additional south parking and trail access area is proposed to the south of the project. And landscape architecture team, talking with the stakeholders and talking with the steering committee and Squamish Nation residents, came up with this idea that it could be gateways, that as you enter the Eagle Viewing Area, it could be public art that signifies you're entering the Eagle Viewing Area and reflects the history of the area of the CHM Reserve. And this is just to zoom in on the public amenity plan to what's called the main amenity area. So the two thick green lines, that's the relocated government road alignment. And it's relocated to the east to get off of CHM Reserve. And it goes through the existing gravel parking area. The space that government road is taking up now, after it's shifted to the east, is proposed as a new parking area that would be directly linked with the dyke and Eagle Viewing Area so that after you park your car, you do not have to cross the road. You would park and you would get directly onto the Eagle Viewing Area. And that's seen as a safety movement. There's also a concept for permanent washrooms, how to access the dyke, whether it's stairs and ramps, and a separate parking area for tour shuttle buses, which is one of the comments we heard from community groups, that there's a lot of school groups that come here and other groups that come here and there's a need for larger vehicle parking. So that's some of the progress on the master plan since it was in council last. Now I just want to present the results of the final engagement. So we had plans to hold another public open house and to have more in-person meetings, but those plans were changed in accordance with the COVID-19 public health guidance. We were able to move the engagement online into a virtual approach. So that involved an online meeting with the CHM Reserve families and residents, a public online survey that had 56 respondents, and more written and email correspondence with environmental and community groups, including the Squamish River Watershed Society and Whitewater B.C. And this final round of engagement, the results were used to strengthen the implementation actions. So where we heard concerns from the engagement, we tried to add components to the implementation actions that would address those concerns. Want to go through the online survey results because out of the 56 people, the majority of them, 49, indicated that they were district residents. I believe the numbers were about 33 residents of the district outside of the study area and 16 within the study area. The majority of those respondents did not support the new dyke alignment, that's Option C, between Fisherman's Park and CHM Reserve. And they highlighted the following concerns. Environmental habitat and ecosystem impacts, impacts to recreational space, including access to the informal beach and dog park area, impacts to development of potential natural areas. So there was a concern that would the dyke enable future development. And there was also suggestions that possibly the land tenure issues could be addressed somewhere off-site. Looking at the Eagle Viewing Area, the majority of the respondents supported the concept of raising the existing dyke on its existing alignment. And there was strong support for the public amenity plan features that I presented. And parking, as expected, was the top commented item. Finally, the implementations action of the master plan, and I'll talk about how they address some of the concerns from the survey. So there's six key themes and several sub-actions under each of them. The first one is land tenure administrative processes. So this includes the Squamish Nation doing work to understand the process and start the process for recapturing land. And there is additional analysis and feasibility assessments. And this is additional technical work that needs to be done. And this includes hydraulic modeling and environmental impact assessments to understand how frequently that vegetated bar that would be partially disconnected gets inundated now and how frequently it would be inundated after the dyke is built to better understand the potential impacts which would enable a more comprehensive environmental assessment. Other actions after this technical feasibility work include preliminary design and more engagement, regulatory engagement to get ready for permitting, and then of course, in the future, detailed design, more engagement permitting, and eventually, construction and operation. And now I'll pass it back to David Rolston for the recommendation.
Thanks, Amir. So the recommendations are the council approved the following resolutions, that the District of Squamish endorsed the Eagle Viewing Area, CHM Reserve Dyke Master Plan, subject to endorsement by Squamish Nation. And again, Squamish Nation are presenting to their council this Thursday. And that the District of Squamish begin implementation of the recommendations in the plan once endorsed by both Squamish Nation and District of Squamish. So with that, I will hand it back to the chair for questions and discussion. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And Acting Mayor Armin Herper is with us now. Are you prepared to take over chair, Armin?
I can do that or you can finish this, this subject, Counselor French. Up to you.
Sure. How about if I just finish this up and then you can pick it up from there?
Perfect, thank you.
Council, are there any questions for Mr. Rolston or Mr. Talagani? Counselor Race? Counselor Penningill?
Thank you. And I guess the significant concern or key to this is the funding. And in the report, it talks about that new section of dyke probably have to be built as one project. So I'm wondering, you know, where do we go from here? Is that the first thing we want to aim for? Do we do work at the southern end first? Do we do work at the southern end first as funding materializes? How would you see this going forward?
Through the chair. I think there is significant technical work that is going to be required before we can begin construction on the new dike alignment portion. We have to, as Amir mentioned, we have to do some geotechnical testing, some river modeling. We have to evaluate stormwater impacts and then we have to secure funding. So to do all of that, I think will be a several year effort. And so I would suggest that we could begin work in south of CHM Reserve in the meantime. There is still significant work that has to be done there. And so I think in terms of timing, it may work out well that we can be completing physical upgrades on the dike south of the CHM Reserve while we're completing planning for the new dike alignment portion.
Go ahead, Counselor Race.
And would that include the amenities? At that part of the dike?
It could include some amenities. I think some of the amenities may be partially contingent on the dike realignment and also government road realignment. So for instance, the parking plan is sort of, I think it necessitates government road being realigned before that could be constructed to its kind of final desired footprint. So but I think there is an opportunity to be working on some of the other public amenity concepts like seating, parking at the south end of the area and so forth. Washrooms, that sort of thing. Thank you.
Very good. Next, we'll hear from Counselor Penningill, followed by Counselor Stoner and Mayor Elliott.
Thank you. Two questions. I read in the report, if I understood correctly, we're talking about incremental seismic improvements with the preferred option. So is there any point at which there is, at least for a little while, a higher risk due to seismic events before we get all the seismic work done? Or are we at least sort of maintaining a baseline of where we are in terms of risk?
Amir, could I ask you to address that question?
Yes. To the chair, to the counselor, I think the seismic issue is one that we have to acknowledge there's significant uncertainty around. And the additional work that's part of the implementation steps would try to refine our understanding of how much seismic work is required. And if it is an extreme amount, as the initial assessment suggested that might be required, then we would want to, it would be warranted to look at incremental steps. What is the interim risk if we build the dike without seismic work? But I want to just not get into that too much because all of that is contingent with discussions with the regulator, which is the Inspector of Dykes Office of B C. So I will also add that the seismic guidelines are under review from the province and there'd be additional practice guidelines coming for geotechnical engineers that are conducting those assessments. So this is an area of potential shifting policy. So it's one to do additional work to better understand the conditions first and then better understand the lay of the land as far as the requirements. We can see that it's significantly increasing the costs and it's the same issue for many other local governments. So incremental approach to seismic risk is something that's being discussed, but not necessarily implemented in many areas. So it's an idea that can be a way out of this problem of the huge cost increase to the seismic. But it's a little early to comment on how exactly it would work. I hope that answers the question.
Okay. Thank you. And the other is on the question of river realignment. I understand that the goal of that would be to make some of the land available between the sort of old and current river alignments. Would, does that suggest though, you know, to make that work, there would also need to be an additional dike realignment or an additional dike to closer to the new river alignment to make that area of land safely usable? Or, and I understand, you know, maybe this is just too much to even contemplate taking on right now. But is that sort of what we would be talking about?
So through the chair, I would say that the master plan tried to separate the issue of dike upgrades that are required for flood risk reduction in Squamish as a whole from the concept and desire from particularly the Squamish Nation to investigate the river realignment. What was done was that it was acknowledged as one of the common interests that whatever solution goes forward, whatever dike upgrading concept goes forward, it enable future work and future considerations on that. So the preferred dike alignment is compatible with additional future work to relocate the river back to its original alignment. It doesn't achieve it by itself. There would need to be additional river engineering work done of a large scale to do that work. And the questions of whether another dike would need to be built, I think the answer would likely be no. As far as flood protection is concerned, this new climate would provide the flood protection to the community. As any other river engineering work, training, bikes and other works would be maybe required to keep the river in the future location as it can be hard to manage natural rivers. In that sense, but we really try to separate the two issues while enabling future, future work on that topic if it went forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penningill. Counselor Stoner, followed by Mayor Elliott.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just curious, in terms of the project value, there's obviously a few competing factors here. And we saw from letters from D F O and B C Parks, some concern about the environmental sensitivity of this area. And I'm curious if the project team or steering committee had any discussions around how that value interacts with the value of potential land recapture and what we mean by that land recapture, if that land is actually environmentally sensitive habitat.
Through the chair. Just to clarify the question, so it's the question whether there's sort of, we've evaluated the competing interests of land recapture versus environmental impacts?
Correct. Thank you.
I think the plan has evaluated that. We've done sort of a multi-objective evaluation of the different options. And, you know, we recognize that there are competing interests between the various values. I think throughout consideration of the new dike alignment, environmental impacts and opportunities to mitigate those impacts has been front of mind. And so that's why we've incorporated a fish friendly pump station into this plan to ensure that there is fish passage into the area. Further work is required to understand what the environmental impacts would be of the new dike alignment. And Amir referenced the need to do flood modeling so we can understand how often is that area actually inundated? We know slough is active at all times, but the island itself is dry and sort of not fish habitat for the majority of the time. So we need to do some modeling to understand that a little bit better. I'll leave it there. I'm not sure if that's answered the question fully, but.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. And then one further question through the chair. In terms of the potential for kind of sequential work starting at the south end, as that seems to be the most feasible place to potentially start, is there a risk in doing upgrades to like one portion of the dike prior to the rest of it?
Through the chair, I would say no. We have a dike in place there already, even though there are deficiencies to it. So we are talking about improving an existing dike. It's not going to be, the impacts on the river itself and sort of upstream impacts on flood levels and that that sort of thing are going to be minimal to sort of non-existent. So I would say no. There, we're not going to be transferring risk in any significant way by completing upgrades at the south end first.
That's everything, Counselor Stoner. Thank you. Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. Thank you for the report and the presentation. I just want to keep talking about risk. So there seems to be support for the Eagle Viewing Area to proceed. And so where does the biggest risk exist now along that whole reach from from Countane all the way up past Seacham? Or are portions of the dike weaker than others?
I'll take the first stab at that and then maybe hand it over to Amir through the chair. I think the weakest area in of the dike in this area is the Gavion basket wall on the CHM Reserve. The dike is narrower there. We have observed seepage. So to me, that is a clear area where there's a present deficiency and we're actually seeing that during high water events where we actually see water sort of bubbling up through the ground on the CHM Reserve. I think also sort of the point of impact where if you look at how the river is aligned and sort of how there's a direct impact of the river hitting the dike sort of just south, near the south end of the CHM Reserve and to the south of the CHM Reserve. That's another area just because of the alignment of the river.
One of the questions I have is that, given the price tag, given the regulatory engagement that we'll have to do on option C, is that that weak point along Seacham Reserve creates risk not only for the members who live there, but also as a dike breach potential, which then puts millions of dollars of infrastructure and thousands of people at greater risk. And so did the committee discuss short-term options while we work at completing the option C design and engagement and approval, which let's face it, along with funding, could take many, many years. And we could have a one in 200 or 500 year flood, you know, this fall or next fall.
Through the chair, we have had discussions about that, about completing interim dike upgrade options. I think it comes down to Squamish Nation's willingness to allow that to happen. I think they have some concerns that interim upgrades could become long-term upgrades. But that is certainly a valid discussion to have as to whether we can and should be doing interim upgrades in the meantime, if it is going to be a significant amount of time before we can be doing those larger scale upgrades.
Yeah, I, I think it's an important conversation for us to have with the nation. And if there was a way to, I know after historic wrongs ease their mind, that temporary would mean temporary. So I totally understand their misgivings potentially about a temporary solution. But I, I do think it's a conversation worth happening because a dike breach there would be, would be awful. And I don't know if we've modeled that. But it's something that I think about while we work on the long-term solution. Also, you know, sometimes with these big projects and time goes by while lots of technical work is being done. I wonder if this project is seeking to ensure that there's enough budget for ongoing engagement and conversation with the community while the work's underway. This is a project we wouldn't necessarily want to see go underground for a while and then pop up again because it contemplates such big changes. And so has the committee thought about how it does more education about the historic wrongs? How it brings people along in the discussion as we find out more around the environmental impacts or the technical requirements, that sort of thing?
Through the chair, we certainly recognize the importance of continuing to engage the community. As, as we do go through the plan, we haven't detailed that out exactly how we would be engaging the community, other than that we know it's required and we would plan on doing it. In terms of, you know, how we've accounted for that in the costs, these are very high level cost estimates. We're calling them class B. They include a 25% contingency. And so, you know, typically we kind of think of that 25% contingency, including things like engineering engagement. You know, just all the things that come along with doing any project.
Yeah. It's totally understandable. And I think, you know, with, since we've been doing this in partnership with Squamish Nation, you know, when you read comments from the public that the land compensation should take place elsewhere, it just shows there's a big gap in people's knowledge about why that would not be acceptable to the nation or why that's not an option that they would prefer. And so I think that ongoing conversation about how we share the past, how we talk about land reclamation, and I think it's really something that we have to be thoughtful about going forward. But I appreciate all the work that's been done on this and thank you to the counselors that have been sitting on this committee. This is a great step forward and it's really well-done master plan. So thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other counselors with questions? Counselor Race?
Thank you. So I just want to be clear because there's been different statements. I take it the long-term intention would be to maintain Jimmy Slough, Jimmy Jimmy Slough as fish habitat as it is now. And so when we talk about the modeling for the island, for lack of a better term, I'll call it, piece of land that would be protected by that new dike, is is there any intent to make it? I mean, what difference does that make, whether it's fish habitat or not to this program? I mean, if the water comes up, the water comes up. If it doesn't, it doesn't. It's typically storm events. I think anybody in the area would tell you that's when there might be inundation of that little island. But why would it really matter whether there is or not today? If we're going to put a dike in front of it and we're going to protect the existing fish habitat through the slough, what difference does it make?
Through, through the chair. I think one of the big reasons why it's necessary to do that modeling and to understand it is because ultimately the new dike alignment needs to receive approval from Department of Fisheries and Oceans. And they have highlighted, we basically provided them with, you know, high level drawings without the support of these detailed technical studies. And they have identified that they will need to see that kind of study in order to support their review of the new dike alignment. And so it really comes down to better understanding the issue. I agree with your comments. I think it's infrequently inundated and the intent is to protect the fish habitat primarily, which is the slough, the active slough in that area. So really, to me, it comes down a lot to better understanding the issue and being able to engage in more detailed discussions with regulators. And I saw that Amir had his stand-up as well, so give him an opportunity to add anything I missed.
Yes, thanks, David. Through the chair, I think the key issue is to understand the rearing habitat that that island, for a better word, can provide. So when it does get inundated, how often is getting inundated? That we can answer through additional hydraulic modeling. That information can be provided to biologists who can comment on how important the habitat values there are. That information can be incorporated into an impact assessment that would be reviewed from a regulatory perspective. So that, that island is not, it's not directly part of the floodway, so it's not wet all the time. The question is, how often does it get wet now? And another question is, if we were to build the dike but maintain the connection to the river through the new proposed Jimmy Jimmy Gentslough pump station flood box, how frequently would it get inundated in that scenario? Because it's not a complete disconnection either. So the question would be, in what flood events would that, in what regular high flow conditions, not necessarily extreme flooding, would that flood box, could it be open and how does that change the potential hydraulics in there and the value, habitat value in there? So it's just, we right now don't, we have incomplete information on that and we need to do more work to understand. In addition to the channel of Jimmy Jimmy Gentslough, what is the additional value of the vegetated island?
Okay, thank you. And we're scheduled to wrap this up by 10:00. So I would like to move on. I do, however, have what I think is one quick question. I noted in the report that there was reference to the Brackendale Master Drainage Plan, which was created in 1992. As we move forward,
As we move forward, would it be wise to update that report? Or is it current enough in its 1992 state?
Through the chair, it's definitely in our plans to be updating that. Currently, we're working on our Phase Two Integrated Stormwater Management Plan, which addresses all areas south of the Maumua River. And the next priority is Brackendale. And so we intend to address that in the next one to two years in, in terms of updating that, that master plan. And one of the key objectives of that will be to understand the impacts of the dike realignment and how, how that would need to be accommodated with new drainage facilities.
Okay. Thank you. And counsel, if there are no more questions? Shall we? Or is anybody interested in moving the staff recommendation? Counsel Anderson, are you moving the staff recommendation?
I'd like to move the staff recommendation, please.
Okay. And Counselor Penningill, I think I saw your hand seconding that. Very good. Counselor Anderson, do you have?
Yes, I'll try to be brief. Firstly, I am strongly supportive of the, the broad picture of community benefits that, that, that should be obtained with this approach. This is a unique tourism amenity and programming or interpretive programming opportunity for the broad community and our visiting public. I believe there are opportunities to mitigate habitat losses, including some that we don't necessarily know of or have specifically detailed at this time. I'd like to congratulate staff and our partners at Squamish Nation on the charter, which has been distributed with our council package. It seems to me that this whole approach to the project of this charter is, has really been beneficial and perhaps can serve as a model for, for the future in other endeavors. I'd like to pass on a couple of observations. There is a reference and I'll quote from the reports to council. "It is possible that erosion was caused or exacerbated by logging practices in the watershed." I think this may be misleading. The emphasis should really be on log transport methods. Before roads and railways, the river was used. And just as a, as another footnote, there was no industrial logging on any large scale in the Squamish watershed through the period that we're talking, not until the late 50s and 60s. Industrial logging began in the Maumua Drainage. So that's just a historical footnote, but we should try to be accurate on something that might be misleading for the public. I'm surprised that the province cannot find information about the road, government road prior to 1938. I'm looking at it right now. The sessional papers from 1891. So more work to do that and important for interpretive programming and reconciliation story with the Squamish Nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Is there any other comments? Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, thank you. I'm very pleased with the, the work that's gone into this and the outcome, the direction we're heading. I just wanted to call out a few things. It's been really fascinating to read through this report in the context of what I've been doing in the reading group where we're going through all of Bob Joseph's books. And a couple of things in particular jumped out to me. One is the comment that Squamish Nation are not just stakeholders in this, they are actually rights holders. And so I, I think that is an important context for my decision at least. Another piece, and the mayor alluded to it, the idea of settling land tenure issues elsewhere. And before I was on council, I was paying attention to the Cheekai fan discussions. And I had a chance to speak with the Squamish Nation counselor at the time. And looking at the cost of that mitigation, I asked, well, why not just, you know, the people that are at risk in the reserves there? Why not just move them? Wouldn't that be cheaper and easier? And the comment that came back to me was, you know, this, this whole area is unceded essentially, and Squamish Nation members were forced in into these small reserves and specific locations, sometimes that weren't necessarily preferred locations. And, and here we are, suggesting to shift people around, move people around yet again for our own interests. And so I think that is for me, and I think others, the challenge with, you know, assuming we can just kind of move people around to solve some of these issues. And so I'm very glad with the approach we're taking here and very actually quite proud of our staff and our team and what we're doing here. So thank you very much.
Very good. Is there any more discussion? Counselor Race?
Thank you. You know, and considering this and, and taking note of, of the concerns of people responding to the survey, I do look at this as a win-win situation. You know, a benefit to the nation because it does right some historic wrongs and cure some things that are ongoing aggravations today, like the trespass of government road. Also protect, better protect their existing reserve lands and residences. But I think it's also clearly a win for other people in Brackendale who will have better protection certainly from, from the floods that can occur or floodwaters that can occur. But also there's, you know, there's additional recreation uses that can come out of this. There's different areas of naturalization. I think it'll be, it could be if done right. I think it could be a great benefit to the entire community. So I do consider this a win-win situation. And I'll be supporting this.
Counselor Hurford?
Thank you. I'm happy to support this project. I throughout the various updates and, and working groups I've been, been involved in on, on this project. It's been very eye-opening to just the number of, of challenges with the, with the project, both in the physical sense and then in the, in the legal sense and the historical pieces of it as well. And I'd just like to commend everyone involved in, in the process. And I think we are very, more than moving in the right direction with this, not only this project, but, but this this sort of, the setup for tackling projects like this, because there are historical issues at every turn in our valley. And I hope that this sets us up to be able to continue to work with our friends at the Squamish Nation to further, better the relationship and the valley as a, as a whole. So happy to support and thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott?
Thank you, Chair. I am happy to support the recommendation, the motion that's in front of us. For me, this is, this is the good work that local governments do. And that's not to say that it's not hard work. It is, it is hard reconciling a past that, you know, we weren't a part of. It's also hard for our community members to understand how that past must necessarily influence the work that we're doing today. Which means that, you know, there might be a land tenure change. Things might change in that area where people recreate now. We know there's private land owners across the road. So with the realignment of government road, that's going to be challenging for them. And and I want to acknowledge that, that, that these are big decisions that have impacts all the way around. But that doesn't mean that, that this is a, the wrong direction. It means that we have to continue to have those conversations, continue to acknowledge the past and share the past and its impact. And also acknowledge the impact of, of these changes on our, our current residents as well. And I think that is, that is hard work, but it's, it's, it's good work to do. And I think we can get there. I think this is a model for how we and other local governments should be approaching diking infrastructure. And, and I hope that other municipalities take note and that we end up with another award-winning plan that has Mr. Rawson's name on it. And thank you, Amir, for all of your hard work on this so much. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I'll just speak briefly in support of the motion because we've, we've already heard from the rest of council members, most of my thoughts. And just reiterate that I think that this work is an excellent example of collaboration between the District of Squamish and the, the Squamish Nation. It is great work and it's being well-handled by a hard-working group of people. So with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And at 10:03 Pacific Time, Acting Mayor Hurford, I will turn the chair over to you.
Thank you, Counselor French, and thank you for your help covering for me as I sorted through my technical difficulties here this morning. So next up will be item four, two, fees and charges update. And I believe we have, who should be with us here, Jonas and Devon?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm just looking for, oh, I've got ability to share my screen, so I'm going to start sharing. Yes, so today Devon Kionaga and myself are joining the committee to discuss proposed updates to engineering fees and community planning applications, which is building permit fees and planning application fees. So I will drive the presentation. And Devon will be up first. Can everybody see my, my screen?
Yes, we, we have it, Jonas.
Excellent. Just before we begin, I just want to note a correction in the report. The report states in the project information session that there's edited sections of the bylaw clearly showing the changes attached to the report. We ended up, ended up not attaching that version because it was not finished when the report was finished. So we're still working on, on those changes. So instead, what is attached to the bylaw is a link to the existing fees and charges by law for, for reference if the council requires. And now over to you, Devon. We've got the first slide up.
All right, thanks, Jonas. Hello, everyone. Good to see you. It's been a while. So the Engineering Department is recommending several changes to the fees and charges bylaw, specifically to the servicing agreement and work permit fees, tree and soil management application fees, and the landfill tipping fees. Some of the changes are simple, such as changes to terminology to be consistent with other bylaws. Other basic changes, just to clarify the intent or to provide consistency with historically how we've applied various bylaws. So I'll walk through some of the key pages. I won't, I won't go through all of them. So servicing agreement fees, these are fees that we charge to cover the costs of administering our servicing agreements for construction of off-site works and services such as water and sanitary mains, service connections, frontage upgrades. So historically, we've collected these based on a summation of project values with a different percentage rate based on each threshold essentially. The bylaw is currently written though to apply to a single percentage value. The problem with this approach is as you approach one of these thresholds, the fees can actually be cheaper if you overestimate. So this change fixes that and brings it in line with the original intent and with how we have historically applied these fees. And go to the next slide there, please, Jonas. Thanks. So the second more significant change is to municipal work permits. So these work permits are for any work completed on district land such as road right-of-ways or in parks. Some examples would be a placement of a crane or a site office on, in a parking lane or on a sidewalk, or taking over boulevards for lay-down areas or site access. So this is most important in busy vehicle and pedestrian use areas. So obviously downtown is a, is a really important area. The fees that we have charged have been a flat fee of $200. And there's also a security deposit requirement that is very unrealistic to administer. So the most important part of the work permit though is so that we, is to make sure that we're informed of the work. And also to ensure that the contractors and those completing the work have the necessary insurance in place and also are mitigating the hazards to the public. It's less about the money and it's more about those other elements. So we're proposing changes to the fee to make it an area-based fee that would be calculated based on the area of district land impacted. So the per square meter rate is based on market rates for the land and are distributed over one year. We're proposing two rates, one for downtown delineated in the image, and then another for non-downtown areas. We've cut, kept the flat fee for filming and for commercial events as they already have fees associated with how much land they use up elsewhere in the bylaw. And we're also waiving the fee for work permits that are less than one week duration. And the reason we're doing this is so that we don't hurt the small jobs such as window washing, like window washing operations, because we don't want to, we don't, we don't want to scare them away from applying for a work permit. I'd rather make sure that we know about the work and that they're insured rather than get, you know, a couple hundred bucks off them. So, so the main incentive of this land or this area-based approach is to, or the reason is to incentivize contractors to not use up space for extended periods of time and shut down sidewalks and parking lanes and, and whatnot. So to mitigate the impact as much as possible. So moving on to the next changes are the tree and soil management fees. So this one is to remove the flat fee for permits associated with habitat restoration and invasive species removal. And we want to do this because these specific situations are actually exempt from the bylaw. So there's no point in having these fees in the fees and charges by law. Finally, we want to waive landfill tipping fees specifically for district projects. That was the original intent for this, for this bylaw when it was, when this was first added in. The intent of the tipping fee is to incentivize others to use their, to find other uses for their soil and asphalt rather than bringing them to the landfill. We do, however, want to bring material there ourselves as we do use some for cover of the landfill itself and for road building. So that is just to bring it in line with the original intent. So I'll hand it back to Jonas to present the other changes and I'm happy to answer questions at the end.
Thanks, Devon. So now on to building permit fee changes. The objective of the proposed changes is to increase the building permit revenue by up to 20%. And this is in order to support the provision of effective service to allow the district to increase our staff capacity to process permits and be able to meet, you know, acceptable timelines for permit review. And also it is to incentivize commercial industrial, industrial tenant improvements, affordable housing when it's built by nonprofits, green buildings and district facilities. So affordable housing that's built by nonprofits and district facilities currently often will get an exemption from having the fees, having to pay the fees. And that happens through a council motion. And I think it just, you having that exemption directly in the bylaw will save council agenda time and staff time preparing those motions. So some of the notable changes are listed in this slide. The plant processing fees are proposed to go to a scale. Right now it's a flat $90 fee. Doesn't matter how big of a project it is. And we're proposing to go to a scale from 200 to 3,000, 3,000 being applicable to large projects over 1 million in value. The permit extension fees are also supposed to go on a scale from 50 to 1,000. Currently, they're all at 50. And it just does not reflect the amount of time that goes into permit extensions. Because often, you know, we'll have to look at what new building code provisions have come into place. And sometimes those are being leveraged on the extension. So it's just to account for the work that goes into extension. An overall permit fee increase is proposed from $9 per 1,000 of development value to $11. So that's about just over 20% increase. At the same time, we're proposing a decrease from $9 to $7 per 1,000 for tenant improvement projects. So that would be any commercial, industrial, institutional tenant improvements wouldn't be associated with the base building construction. Usually those laws are carried by a developer. But it would reduce the fees for tenants once they take over the space and they often have to make improvements in order to get the space to the right occupancy level. We're also proposing a reduction from nine to $6 per 1,000 development value for green buildings. So this is one So this is when the building is exceeding the district's step code requirements and proposing to utilize a green energy system or renewable energy system. We're also proposing to eliminate fees for, as I mentioned, affordable housing and district facilities. For planning application fees, the objective is to increase application fee revenue for large residential development applications to recover costs and incentivize nonprofit affordable housing and district facility projects. Again, the latter two often are exempt by council motion, so we're just proposing to eliminate that step. And overall, planning revenue from planning fees is not accounting for the amount of staff time and resources that are being put in place. So this is an incremental change to try and bring that revenue up. Notable changes are subarea planning fee increases increased from 22,000 to 30,000. It's not going to account for the amount of work that goes in to the planning review. But it is also expected that when there's a subarea planning application, that the district will be entering into an agreement with the applicant for funding a position that will be largely responsible for the review. We're proposing to removing discounts for larger residential development applications and concurrent OCP rezoning applications. So right now, if you're applying for an OCP amendment and a rezoning, there's a 25% discount. And there's also the fees calculated on rezonings for residential development is on a scale, and it goes from 300 to 100 above 50 units. So we're proposing to eliminate that. Rezoning fees, rezoning revenue is, I would say, over the last couple years, hasn't been significant. It hasn't accounted for staff time spent on rezonings. So I think this item is something that we should look closer at in terms of a general increase. So right now, it's 300 per unit when you go above three units for rezoning. And this is not in the report, but I think the more I'm thinking about it, the more it makes sense to increase it, because when we compare rezoning revenue with development permit revenue, development permit revenue sort of, you know, it does account for the amount of work we're spending on it, whereas rezoning has not even come close. And it's largely because often rezonings go beyond a one-year review period, and so those fees collected in the first year just cover the first year, and they're not covering even that at the moment. We're also proposing to eliminate application fees for nonprofit affordable housing and district facilities, as mentioned. Also propose some changes to business licensing bylaw. So we're just trying to piggyback onto these amendments because this is specific to cannabis retail, and we know that cannabis retail is now regulated by the province. When we established regulations in the business licensing bylaw for cannabis retail, that was not the case. So we're proposing to eliminate security requirements, regulations that pertain to who can hold a license and how many licenses can be held by an individual, as well as requirements for operation in conjunction with other uses. So those portions are now of the cannabis retail operation are regulated by the province. We're also proposing to eliminate regulations pertaining to signage, air filtration, hours on-site consumption, and then reduce the licensing fee after the first year of operation because really our heavy processing load is on that first year, and when it comes to subsequent years, we're simply renewing the license. And that's it. We'll turn it over back to council for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Vilma Sis. Can we take this? There we go. Just trying to get to a screen where I can see everybody. Okay. Council, questions? Counselor French, followed by Counselor Stoner.
Okay, thank you. In the report, it's noted that if council is supportive of the proposed bylaw changes, staff will bring forward the proposal for consultation with development community representatives before returning to council for consideration of bylaw readings. The report also makes mention of cannabis retailers. Is there any thought that consultation should take place with that sector as well?
Through you, Chair. Yes, certainly, we can reach out to all of the retailers who are currently operating in the district. We didn't think it was critical to do that just because, you know, everything we're doing is responding to some of the comments that we have heard over the years, over the last four years or so. But we can certainly do some reach out just to make sure that, you know, we're addressing all of the relevant concerns.
Great. Thanks, Chair.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, a few clarifying questions. Let me ask the work permit. Is that the charge on a weekly basis, a monthly basis, or more frequent, less frequent?
Through you, Chair. So yeah, the fee is applied to a weekly basis. So the first week would be free, and then it would be charged on each week subsequently after.
That's helpful. Thank you. And then with regards to the proposed reduction of the building permit fees for exceeding step code, I'm just curious, because come January 2021, the bylaw will be at step code four. And so that is basically a reduction for residential if it's meeting passive home. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is something that we're aware of as an item that needs to be addressing in our zoning bylaw as well in 2021, because you are correct. For some projects, not all, but for some, it will be at the highest step. Or let's say apartment buildings, part three, step four is the highest. So we do need to come up with a new standard for 2021 for the zoning bylaw as well.
Yeah, I think it'll be important to think that through a little bit more in terms of that incentive. I appreciate it being in there, but I'm not sure if it's 100% where we want it to be at this point. And then with regards to the proposal to increase the base price for building permits, I realize that this is a bit of a chicken and egg with increasing costs versus current capacity. But I have a hard time thinking that we can increase the cost based on our current turnaround rates for building permits. And I'm curious why staff are proposing that we are blanket increasing the base price from $90 to $200 when there are some building permits that I suspect are less difficult to process than others.
So the reason why we're going with $200 is that, you know, there's very few permits that would be able to, whether we could justify, you know, spending no more than two hours in processing time. I think comparatively, our fees for that minimal fee of $90 is really low. You know, sometimes, not often, but sometimes we do get permanent applications that get processed and not picked up. And generally speaking, I think 200 would just cover our processing times between the clerks taking in the permits, the clerks doing preliminary review before it actually gets to the building inspector for code review. So I think 200 would just cover our cost for 99% of the permits.
Just a quick follow-up, if I may.
Go ahead.
So looking at the different types of works that require a building permit, so if I'm just trying to add a deck to my house, worst thing that that takes two hours is staff time to review that permit.
It depends on the deck. So some decks don't require a permit. If you're adding a deck that is less than two feet above ground, that wouldn't require a deck. Decks that have some structural factors associated with them, you know, we have to still confirm setbacks, confirm lot coverage before we even get to start looking at building code and then do inspections on that as well. So in some cases, like decks, you know, that processing fee is the bulk of the building permit fee.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. Counselor Pedigale, next.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanting to, we're looking at some of the things we used to administer through the community enhancement grants, having community foundation, arts council, sort of administer some of that according to some policy, and I forget the names of the specific policies. And I think my understanding was bundled in with that was waiving some of these fees as sort of another piece. And so I guess would the same policy apply in terms of which not-for-profits qualified for these reductions? Because, you know, not-for-profit isn't necessarily a charity, doesn't necessarily have community benefit. And so is the expectation that there would be staff discretion in this to sort of target these fee waivers in a way that aligns with that policy?
So the bylaw does not define what is a nonprofit. I don't think it does. Let me just double-check that. And so in that case, any nonprofit, as long as they are able to provide the documentation that they're a nonprofit, would be eligible for the fee waiver. There is no policy associated with this. It's just, you know, the bylaw prescribes in black and white who is eligible and who isn't.
Okay, and I guess that would be an area of concern with me, depending, I mean, if it's a very small number, then maybe it's not worth the effort. But if it becomes significant, I think I'd probably want to align these with, you know, things that might otherwise qualify for community foundations, sort of in that realm of not-for-profit or project. There's a comment, I think, that there's going to be a flat rate for all TUPs. But my assumption is that non-delegated TUPs, you know, when there has to be a council report and then their staff time at a council meeting and all that are much more expensive. Can you speak to the rationale behind a flat fee?
Yes, so I would say that the fee for temporary permits that go to council is not reflective of the amount of work that goes into preparing the report and then, you know, getting on council agenda and then doing the presentation and then issuing the temporary permit. So we're simply aligning the difference between the two. I think it's $200. The delegated TUP is 500. Non-delegated is 700. I think once we align them, we will be able to do cost recovery for delegated ones at 700, but not for non-delegated ones. And that's just the, you know, the basis of some of the fees that we're going to lose in some cases and we're going to gain in others. But overall, the fees are reflective of the work that goes in.
Okay, and then I guess a final question, sort of building on Counselor Stoner's question a little bit. What I've been hearing from people is that in terms of permits and so on, the number one obstacle is not having a fixed timeline. The second obstacle in this order is having timelines that are too long to get a response. And then the third issue is cost. And so have we looked at these costs based on our current timelines and turnaround? Or do we look at what we would need to charge in order to provide fixed timelines and/or quicker timelines, especially in terms of priority projects like affordable housing or energy efficiency and that sort of thing?
So for priority projects, I don't believe building permitting timelines is an issue. They simply go to the front of the queue. And, you know, we haven't had many complaints around the turnaround time for those. The intent of the increased building permit fees is really so that we can add more staff capacity to doing pre-reviews of building permit applications and get back to applicants much sooner than we normally do. Right now, the building permits go into the queue. They will be in there. We just make sure that it has all the documentation that we need until the building inspector gets to reviewing the permit. And then, you know, we find out that there are setback issues or there's additional documentation required because of some special conditions. So this will let us get that out of the way much sooner. And yes, the objective is to have a standard timeline for types of permits. And we used to have that, you know, just before COVID hit. So COVID has sort of thrown a wrench in there. So, you know, I think that we need some experience with adequate staff capacity before we can start quantifying what our ability is to standardize the timelines.
Okay, thank you. So just to clarify what I was referring to by priority projects, I wasn't thinking about our policy on the five we put in the queue, but more in terms of, you know, hopefully, we'll get a whole bunch of people that are wanting to do deficiency and clean energy retrofits and affordable housing things. And so, you know, even if they don't fit in the queue, do they get a fixed timeline? Or can we charge enough in general so that we can provide a fixed timeline and/or shorter timelines? And I guess that may, my comment attached to that is I'm willing to consider even higher fees if that would be the benefit. So just something to consider, I guess.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Pedigale. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. With respect to the new proposed fees and discount policies also applying to the larger residential developments, some of our larger development companies have, of course, ongoing projects in lower mainland municipalities. I'm wondering if staff has undertaken benchmarking with other municipalities on the fees and licensing that we're discussing here. I may have missed it in the report, but I didn't see a reference, I don't think, to that benchmarking and looking at what's going on elsewhere.
That is something we can certainly take a look at. At this point, we're looking at, you know, our current amount of resources we are spending on application review and where there are significant holes essentially in our revenue budget. So rezonings are coming up as certainly, you know, an area where we're not collecting enough unless we have a very busy year. And a very busy year will generate years of work essentially if we have lots of applications come in for rezonings. But when we come back to council, we can bring back as well an analysis of surrounding jurisdictions for fees. We've done that on the last time we did the update. I believe it was in 2016, which is what these fees are based on.
Thank you. Counsel, any? Mary, I'll do it.
Thank you, Chair. I will say, this was hard to wrap my head around because there isn't a before and after version to compare it to. So I wouldn't want this to come back without that. I can't see the language you want to use in the changes, so I'm trying to imagine what this all sounds and looks like from your staff report. So that's challenging. So one, you know, one of the things that I hear when we talk about building permits or development permits is this idea that, you know, we'll make sure it's got all the documentation, but then a staff person will open up and realize there's a setback issue or that sort of thing. Is there a way to design our GIS system so that if someone clicks on their property, we can highlight the things they need to pay attention to? So you've got riparian restrictions, or these are the setbacks for the RM1 zone? Or like, instead of waiting for people to screw up, is there a way that we can proactively make sure they don't to help streamline their process? So that's how we started to think about how we make sure we get better applications.
I think the issues we normally run into, sometimes they are significant. You know, sometimes somebody has overlooked the fact that they're in a riparian development permit area or flood hazard development permit area, which is required before we can issue the building permit. But more often, it's minor issues, you know, like foundation that's 0.2 of a meter too close to the property line. point two of a meter too close to the property line. So we can, I think that we are, we are increasing our public facing GIS system. And we, you know, we're trying to flag if some, if somebody, if a member of the public clicks on the property to make sure that the all the development permit areas are flagged. But I think the issues where we most often run into are these minor changes that then can have a rippling effect across all of the, you know, drawings associated with the building permit application.
Yeah, um, I just, I find it challenging to be raising fees without also talking about process improvement. And I understand that our technology implementation will allow us to start benchmarking and looking at timelines. But I think that's a lens we have to put across this. And one of the questions I had though was around the cannabis regulations and which parts the province is regulating and which parts we tried to before it was legalized. Things like air filtration and security, those are all now covered by the province?
For air filtration, I'm not certain. And we're taking the, we're basing these changes on the assumption that, just like with liquor stores and liquor sales, the province is overseeing all of the operational aspects of the of the licensing process. So air filtration with cannabis retail, I don't believe the province is is getting into it. But also, I think the way that the the products are being packaged now do not create that that issue that, you know, was associated with pre-regulation days. Security measures, yes, the province is absolutely looking looking after that aspect.
Yeah, so I think, I don't know, because I don't use them. But I I think that's one of the things residents worry about if cannabis retail is going to be in their building is that it creates a nuisance smell in the same way that lush creates a nuisance smell because it stinks like soap for like three blocks around every store. And so that's something that I think we should actually still look at and see and see if it's an issue. And then it talks about, sorry, I'm just trying to find the section here. Oh, yeah. Removing who can hold cannabis retail licenses, how many licenses can be held by one individual? An operation of a cannabis retail in conjunction with other uses. One of the reasons that we wanted to limit the number of cannabis retail licenses someone could hold was that to ensure there was competition in the district. And so, so that one person couldn't take over the whole market. We're a pretty small town. So why would we take, get rid of that provision?
From my perspective, I think perhaps that was part of the reason. The other part of the reason was just this general desire to have control over how many cannabis retail operations are there in the district. And so I think just like with any other, this this is the only use where we regulate the number of retail stores that somebody can operate. So it was just based on the fact that, you know, we're not going to regulate the competition. We're just going to regulate the location where these can can occur and then rely on the province to make sure that the right people are operating it.
Yeah, fair statement. Okay, thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Mary Elliot. Councilor Stoner?
Question on the changes to the cannabis component. The proposal is to reduce the fees after the first year and keep the the first year fees at $5,000. And I'm just curious how the process is different from a liquor primary license that would require or justify a fee that is five times greater than a liquor primary.
So the biggest difference would be the fact that we have to advertise the application. We have to collect public feedback and then we we have to provide that to the province. And that does take some time for staff. In some cases, we get lots of public feedback. And that's often when the applicants are collecting, you know, kind of like a petition in their store. And then they provide it to us and we have to pull that on to the province.
So appreciate that and thanks for the justification. And the there is a fees and charges by law fee for advertising fees for liquor license applications at 750. So if I add those two together, we're at 1750 for a liquor primary. And so I'm just curious if the the amount of work justifies that level of differentiation between the two.
That's a fair point. We haven't used the liquor advertising provision in the bylaw very much. So I don't want to speak off the top of my head whether it covers the work associated with it. We just haven't had that much experience recently.
Are you good there, Councilor Stoner? I had a quick question here. With the cannabis, the dispensaries, does the restrictions on the hours of operation, is that covered in this amendment as well? And turns that over to a provincial regulated piece? Is that still?
That's correct. We would be removing the hours of operation.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any further questions? Councilor Pedengill?
Yeah, just wanting to understand. I don't actually know how much permits work. But if I really wanted to do a deck and we had some incentive program, for example, a fixed timeline, if you're doing a clean energy retrofit, would I still need two separate permits to do that or would that be bundled under one permit typically? Because they're both projects I'm doing at my home at the same time. And in the back of my mind is is a way can we use, you know, the fact that people want to do decks? But if they did a clean energy retrofit as well, they would get access to a faster timeline or something. And is that an incentive tactic or, you know, is that just not possible?
No, it's possible. So if somebody wanted to do, you know, a renovation to their house with green energy and meeting or increasing step code and they wanted to add a deck at the same time, that would, I believe, would be covered under one permit. So you wouldn't have to make two different permit applications for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll go chime in with another question before we before we move on. The, I'm trying to understand the sort of cost recovery versus the increasing capacity and recovering the cost on that capacity. And just in general, as a comment, I think we need to see more information in that in that way to really understand where we are. I know it's a hard thing to quantify as far as the turnaround times and and the variables that we have heard lots about in discussions recently. So that's a challenge and I'm sure we're going to come up with some good way to 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 present that. But I don't think we're quite there yet. And in the rezonings, Mr. Vilniskas, you said doesn't even come close. And I'm just curious what sort of percentage, what sort of analysis you have done or we could expect to see that would quantify that. So if we're, if we're, are we coming only to 25% of costs or we, like how? What does, what does that look like? What do you expect that to to look like, even if we're just sort of ballparking here as we discuss this?
Yes, that's a really good question. We can bring that information when we come back with the bylaw amendments. So for instance, rezonings, I think this year at least, you know, we're only accounting for probably 25% in terms of how much revenue we collect for for zoning applications and how much staff time is spent on on that. But we are one department between planning and building. So I think it'd be useful for council to see revenue from both of these functions and how it covers, you know, the community planning resource essentially, because we do collect more resources in the building in the building service, but that covers a lot of the planning work as well. A lot of the, a lot of times planners are deeply involved in building permit applications and review, especially when it's forming character. And then, you know, a a rezoning application also has impact on how many building permits we review. So all I'm saying, I guess, is that we look at the revenue from both departments overall and whether we're covering the expense overall. And so we'll bring all that information at the next meeting.
Thank you. So, Counsel, we have a motion here that that does have an allowance for feedback. I heard a lot of questions. I'm not sure if there was specific feedback to to take with at this point. Mr. Vilniskas, was there anything in particular that maybe you could run me through the feedback that you heard?
Yeah, I've taken some notes here. So one, the first one was reach out to cannabis retailers to make sure they understand the changes we're making before we come back. Do some more work on what is exceeding step code mean in 2021 for some of those applications that will be at the top? Compare some of fees with other jurisdictions and better analysis of current revenue and what we're trying to achieve with these changes. Air filtration for cannabis retail should be reconsidered. And then taking a technology lens on helping building permit applications avoid kind of pitfalls of missing information in their submission.
Yes, Mary Elliot?
Jonas, with regard to the filtration and cannabis, is that something better captured in the zoning bylaw in terms of? I'm just wondering if the fees and charges of bylaws, the best place to preserve it or put it somewhere else? That we don't want this used to be a nuisance to its neighbors or or any retail shouldn't be a nuisance to its neighbors in terms of light smell, sound kind of idea. So I'm just reflecting on my feedback and thinking, is this the best place to put it or should we tidy it up in the zoning bylaw?
Well, some of the changes around cannabis retail are, I've mentioned, are in the business license file. So I think it's proper for them to stay there.
Okay.
I I think that we could definitely leave the air filtration requirement in there. That's not a big, that's not a problem at all.
Right, thanks.
I have a suggestion on the air filtration piece and perhaps it's worthwhile asking the province what their stance is on that. I do think that the the standards of packaging and and things that you mentioned earlier, Jonas, might sort of have taken care of the need for that filtration piece and just to understand that. So perhaps we get some feedback from the province if everyone's okay with that, to make sure that we're doing something that's, you know, that hasn't been considered. We're not duplicating the the work, which I think is part of what this whole process is about. So and I do agree that we don't want to have any of our businesses being a nuisance to their neighbors for for all those reasons. But maybe that's something that the province has has addressed. We're just not aware of the nuance there. Counsel, does, would someone like to move the motion with the feedback as mentioned by Mr. Vilniskas? Oh, Councilor Stoner, question?
I just wanted to add one component. I appreciate Councilor Anderson's suggestion of a benchmark of the fees. And I wonder if it'd be possible to also include, even if it's just a rough estimate, and I appreciate they aren't always comparable, but turnaround times for building permits in relative comparable areas. We have gotten a lot of feedback to counsel that there's a risk of further unpermitted works occurring as a result of slow turnaround times. And I feel like if we increase fees, that we may further incentivize that as a unintended consequence. So if there's an ability to do just a get check on on turnaround times, that would be helpful as well.
Counselor Pedengill, were you moving a motion or your question?
I just had one comment or I can move the motion and then make the comment. I just wanted to get, see if we could capture it in the council comments from the motion.
Go ahead with your comment. We'll we'll get it in there and we are a little over time, so.
Okay.
Incise.
Yeah, so I I don't hear from anyone that they want to see more development in Squamish. And so as I'm looking at fee increases versus timelines versus guaranteed turnaround times and that sort of thing, that's always near to the top of my mind. And so I think there are things we want to incentivize. And some of that's outlined in our policy in terms of affordable housing and clean energy retrofits and that sort of thing. But it's not a priority for me to keep fees at a at a rate that incentivize a lot more development necessarily. And so that's why I'm comfortable pushing up the fees if if it helps us achieve those other goals. So I just wanted to try and put that context with my comments.
Okay, Counsel, that, Mary Elliot?
With respect to the Chair, development comes and it comes with daycares and it comes with public realm improvements. And it comes with affordable housing and making sure that we have a fee structure and a process that meets the expected timelines. And we don't have people skirting around rules because our timelines are too long or the fees are too high is the important work that we do. And so, you know, we all hear that from folks that maybe the development's happening too fast. We also hear from business owners who can't find room to expand their business. We also hear from moms and dads who we can't build daycare fast enough for. And that comes with development and it comes by expeditiously making sure those developments come through our system. So there's a lot of different perspectives here. And to say that no one says they want more development is just simply not accurate. So what we're trying to find with these fees and charges is a balance that covers our costs. And behind that is a whole conversation as we implement our technology improvements about improving process and making sure simple things get done quickly, that we help our entrepreneurs and small business get open faster, that we make sure that nonprofit and and green buildings move forward quicker. So like, let's just not all paint all development with the same brush. It's different. And we achieve some of our goals by expeditiously making this happen and not having fees that aren't out of line with our neighbors. So I just want to make sure that that both perspectives are represented here.
Mr. Vilniskas, would you like to take a shot at summarizing those two sets of comments so we can formalize them in this in this motion? I'm being slightly facetious there. I'm going to go back to Councilor Pedengill for a counterpoint. But then we do need to move on to the to finish this topic.
Yeah, I'm hoping I can clarify. I think I'm actually saying the same thing as the mayor, which I think it is the daycare and those things that people want to see and are willing to accommodate some level of extra development to achieve that. But development in and of itself is not something I hear much support for. It is all the other things like daycare and so on. And so for me, it is rates that help us achieve those goals first and foremost, as opposed to just generally incentivizing development. Because there are some people, I think mostly developers, that would argue that perspective. But that's not what I hear most often.
Okay.
I'll move the recommendation.
Counselors, moved by Councilor Stoner, second by Councilor Anderson. Comments? Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. I very much appreciated this report. It was a great opportunity for this, for me, a new counselor to have a window into this world. I really do appreciate staff informing us and being frank about these circumstances. And I can't help but refer to another report that we'll be receiving later today under organizational impact in a report to council on another development permit. This application is complex and requires collaboration and review from multiple departments. And I do appreciate staff keeping us informed of their perspective on these challenges and opportunities with the with review. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilor Stoner.
I'll keep it quick. I'll just say, thanks for bringing this report forward. I will echo the mayor's comments that a track changes version of the bylaw will be extremely helpful in future iterations so that we can wrap our hands around what we're actually looking at. And I am particularly Um, and I am particularly excited to see the municipal works permit coming forward. I think that's one that we've all been waiting for, for a long time. I'm so happy that all these conversations are happening. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll just add a quick, quick comment. I'm, I'm happy to see this come forward and our, our processes to continue to improve. Uh, I'm interested to see how our cost recovery versus uh, sort of increased uh, increasing capacity and that cost recovery and how that sort of all fits together as we, as we see this um, next time. Um, and with some more context, but overall, I'm, I'm happy with the, the overall direction and uh, the potential for in, uh, improved customer service. So with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Counsel, um, we've got a Counselor Reese, yes?
Yeah, I know we're scheduled for a recess right now, but I have a conflict on the item immediately following the recess. I wonder if I could declare it now uh, to allow me to pack up during the recess. That would be.
That's uh, fine by me. Does um, is a corporate officer, that's, I imagine this feels like okay process for me, so go ahead, Counselor Reese.
Thank you. The following item is the development permit for waterfront landing, and I'm a potential purchaser of a unit in that development, and that creates a reasonable apprehension of bias and a conflict. So I will recuse myself from that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Reese. We'll be um, we're gonna go into a quick recess here, and then we will contact you um, when we've completed that, that topic. Thank you very much. So counsel.
Last on the agenda before lunch, if I read it correctly. And so I was just gonna come back uh, at twelve thirty as scheduled.
Okay, we'll let you know when it's done, and then we'll, uh, we'll, we'll go, we'll go from there, but that sounds reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So counsel, um, we'll take a quick uh, quick stretch break here. Ten minutes? Sound good? Everybody nods around? Okay, we'll see you back in ten. Thank you so much. Okay, welcome back, everybody, to Committee the Whole for District Squamish. And today is Tuesday, the tenth of November. And I'm uh, Acting Mayor, Armin Herford, and I will be chairing this meeting. Our next item on is waterfront landing phase three, B slash C, DP five forty. Mr. Villanissis, I'll turn it over to you, I believe. Are you leaving this one?
Uh, I'm just gonna introduce uh, Susan Stratus, who's the planner on this file. And Susan will be giving a presentation. I'll see the slides already up.
Thank you very much. Take it away, Susan.
Susan, you're muted, just in case you're not aware.
Okay, uh, Susan, I'm being told that you may have to unmute at your end. You are unmuted at this end. And we're also not seeing your video. Your audio is definitely more important than your video at this point.
Is she logged in? Sharon's logged in?
Yeah.
Susan, you might have to come out of the presentation mode in order to see your um, mute button.
Thank you for everyone's patience as we work through some technical issues here.
Let's try that. Um, can people hear me now?
We can hear you. This feels like a step in the right direction here. Off to the races. Thank you.
Okay, I will just proceed with the presentation then, just to keep um, everything on track. So let me, let me try and get back to that screen. Oh, thought a bit of luck there.
And then we, we're looking good. Thank you so much. I'll, I'll let you take it away.
Okay, thank you. Um, good morning again, mayor and council. What we're um, reviewing today is development permit number five forty, which is phase three and, three B and C of the waterfront landing development. Um, I should mention that we're approaching this DP as a two-step process. We're bringing it first to the committee because it's a large project that hasn't been reviewed before. And we anticipate bringing it back with the actual development permit in December. The site for this project is located, the civil address is still fifteen hundred Highway ninety-nine. Uh, the site we're looking at is outlined in turquoise, but the portion that belongs to the three B and C project is on the, outlined in yellow, highlighted in yellow print. It's one point one six hectares. And the um, other part of that turquoise par- parcel will be subdivided off in the near future. The phase one and two townhouses directly south of this parcel shown on Koho Rockway and Marina Sideway are currently under construction, and residents are now living there. The phasing plan for this development uh, shows on this slide. I'm sorry, just had to move uh, some pictures off the screen. So the um, subarea plan was adopted in two thousand and seventeen that established the phasing plan. The phase one DP was issued in December two thousand and seventeen for eighty-eight units. And phase two A DP was issued in December two thousand and eighteen, a year later. So we're now looking at the um, site three B and three C that's highlighted in red. The policy framework for this development permit is the waterfront landing subarea plan, which has its own DPA guidelines, which are somewhat different than the ones for the rest of Squamish. These were established um, before the new LCP was brought in, so they have been retained for waterfront landing. And the CD forty zone applies to the site, and yeah, this particular site is zone mixed use commercial. Just looking quickly at the overall site plan, that shows the two buildings that are part of this development permit. Building three B on the left-hand side and building three C, which is adjacent to waterfront landing park. And it shows the context of the other phased townhome developments. Basically, this parcel fronts on Laurelwood Road, and I believe it will be assigned a new address when the subdivision is complete. Looking a bit more closely at the site plan with the two apartment buildings. The access, the vehicle access is shown on the red, with the red arrows. There are two access points on Koho Rockway. The uh, first one leads to the underground parcade, and the second one leads to the surface parking lot. There is also a third access point on Laurelwood Road, which is um, just a surface entrance, which allows trucks to go to the end of the cul-de-sac and turn around and drop off at the um, at the surface bay there, where there are elevators leading to the, leading to the buildings. Looking a bit more closely at this landscape plan, um, the site is very heavily landscaped around its perimeter and within the parking lot. There are some um, truck parking areas at the um, at both ends of this parking lot. And one thing, I don't know that I can use the arrow. Does that arrow show? Anyway, there is a small patio area shown on the left, left-hand side of the screen.
Yes, your arrow shows, by the way, Susan, so you can use that throughout.
Thank you. That's great. On the right-hand side of the screen, there are a couple of things I wanted to point out. One is the um, daycare play area that is shown. There's a bit of a blank right now. Within uh, building three C, there is a daycare facility proposed and required by the land development agreement. And the play area will be further defined once a um, operator is assigned to the daycare. And we will wrap that into the development permit conditions to get a detailed landscape and play area plan. Fortunately, one of the um, outcomes of the daycare review is that the daycare center has to be secure. The play area is not going to be available to the general public. So as we work through the details of that plan, we will be working closely to see if any part of that area can be assigned for public um, play area. But at this point, we're considering it to be an area that's going to be uh, fully utilized by the daycare center. And that's the requirements of, I think, of the coastal health authority. The other part of this landscape plan I'd like to point out is this large um, central plaza area that has a play, um, a grass play area for children and some play poles that will show in some further images. And this main spine is the main pedestrian connection that moves through to phase three A of the development that's not yet built. And running along this outer edge is the main um, path, pathway for residents to use to get to the park. So that's the main um, connection, and I'll get to a, a further slide on pedestrian connections in a second. So the residential units proposed for this development, there are a hundred and ninety-five total in the two buildings. Um, building three B, which is the one closest to Koho Rockway, consists of both market and non-market rental units, hundred and five units. And building three C consists of ninety market rental units. So um, in total, there will be a hundred and ninety-five rental units added to the district's housing stock. Um, forty of those will be adaptable units, and twenty-eight are required under zoning. Twelve of them, of them will be fully accessible units, and eleven are required under zoning. So this graph shows the distribution of unit size between bachelors up to three bedrooms. And only building three B um, contains three-bedroom units, which is a requirement of the land development agreement. Just looking at the bigger picture of pedestrian connectivity, the, the main trail that runs through the overall development, the multi-use trail um, runs on the perimeter of this, of this um, property and eventually connects to waterfront park. I should mention that the connection to waterfront park, because of the elevation of the site, there are trails downward into waterfront park. It's not a, it's not a whole connection there. The main pedestrian spine through the site, as I mentioned, is here. And there are walkways around each of the buildings and a number of staircases shown in turquoise. And there are two ramps, one here on Laurelwood and another one over here adjacent um, to allow people to get into waterfront park to be fully accessible. I will show you some photos in a, in a minute, some drawings. But um, one of the challenges with this project is that the site is elevated above the road grade, so that does create conditions where stairs and ramps are required. The project meets the majority of the LDA requirements by providing the non-market and market rentals, and in fact exceeds the uh, fifty market rentals, because ninety are now being provided. The average unit size for the affordable rentals um, is exceeded seventy-five square meters, seventy-four square meters is the average unit size. The daycare slightly exceeds the requirements of the LDA, and the project does provide eight public parking spaces as required for waterfront park. The one condition that is partly met, there is a requirement for a twelve-hundred square meter space within each of the two buildings with upper story commercial use. That has only been partly met because the uh, the total area is provided. There is twenty-four hundred square meters of space. It isn't divided equally between the two buildings, and there is no upper story office provided. We did um, work with the applicants uh, over the past months to see if that were a possibility, and they um, believe that, that the first story commercial is more viable. And they wanted to focus on providing additional rental units in the upper stories of the building. The staff report mentions that um, the staff believe this is an acceptable solution, and it will require an amendment to the land development agreement, which would be brought forward at the next council meeting. Looking at the building form and character, the applicants have um, that there's some interesting guidelines for waterfront landing that call for buildings that reflect marine heritage and marine industrial appearance, which is a bit challenging to, to bring forward in apartment buildings. But they have um, brought forward a design that reflects the townhouse design with the bold roof lines and the um, fairly dramatic wraparound roof lines on the buildings. And they have used color and roof design to separate these fairly large buildings into separate components, so that the um, you know, the overall massing of the buildings is reduced. So this is a view facing into the parking lot of building three B. And this is a uh, other side view facing onto Laurelwood. And this uh, rendering does show you the, the great change between the, between Laurelwood Road and this site. And that great change is due to the um, geotechnical conditions on the site in order to place the parcade partially underground. The water table is still high, even with filling the site to the recommended flood construction level. So it has created um, this increase in grade, um, nicely landscaped, but certainly uh, a different uh, profile what we had originally thought would be the case here. And this is another view of building three B showing the corner that has a wide staircase and a ramp up to the commercial level. Looking at building three C, this is showing the outdoor play area for the daycare center. And again, this is a, um, this building has a different roof line. It's broken into just two components rather than three. And this is looking at it from the Laurelwood Road side. And looking at some of the details at the ground level, um, the applicants have um, put a lot of attention into the detailing and the deep overhangs of the, of the ground floor level. And it's really meant to be um, kind of a people environment. The landscape plan shows many benches and seating areas, and the lower right uh, drawing shows uh, the small playground area for children, so that it's not entirely adult-oriented. One of the uh, points to mention is there are other playgrounds in the adjacent uh, townhouse areas and of course in waterfront park that will be fully available to all residents. Looking at the building materials, I've mentioned the uh, wraparound roofs. The primary material that's used here is fiber cement panels, and there are uh, glazed metal panels used on the, on the balcony decks. And at the ground level, there are some additional materials. Don't show too well in this drawing. But um, uh, wood, wood textured metal panels are used to bring warmth to the commercial level at the, at the ground level. And there are some bold uh, wood entry features that I'm not sure I actually put a slide up showing those. But the primary, uh, the primary material is cement panels, and that is um, offset by the use of metal throughout. I don't know how clearly this shows up on everyone's screen. This um, building section does show the This building section does show the relationship to the grades, and I'll just use the arrow here. So this is the existing grade of Laurelwood Road. And you can see that the underground parking is only partially sunk below the level of Laurelwood Road, and that's due to the high-water table conditions. Even with the fill that's placed on the site, it is still influenced by the tides of medical blind channel. So there is additional fill to be placed on this site, and the future parcade will be partly sunk, as shown on this cross-section. The building does meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw for height. It's slightly below the 25-meter height requirement. And the buildings do meet all of the other zoning bylaw provisions for building setbacks, site coverage, and floor area ratio. To put this in context, we did ask the applicants to provide an illustration showing the relationship to the existing townhouses. So you can see there is certainly a height difference. The narrow end of these buildings do face the townhouses across Koho Rockway, and there is separation provided by the road and by the building setbacks that exist both on the townhouse and the apartment properties. I think this drawing also is a good illustration of how the dark colors between the sections of the building have been used to give the impression of separate building elements there. So moving on to parking, for the residential apartments, the parking requirements are met and deficiencies in the underground area, which is used for the residential units. Fifteen spaces of the residential parking are provided through the use of three car-share vehicles. And each of those requires a parking space, so there's a net gain of 12 spaces. We will be bringing forward more information on the car share at the council meeting. One of the things we have, the zoning bylaw, the CT40 zoning bylaw allows for car shares outright. So it can be used to reduce parking requirements. But we have found out recently that the motor cars are not being used as well as most expected. So we may be arranging an agreement with OSA that the cash equivalent of the cars can be placed in an active transportation reserve fund should Moto not be able to put cars on the street at the time this building reaches occupancy. The visitor parking and commercial parking take place in the upper parking lot, the surface parking lot. And there are potential deficiencies there. The residential visitor parking requirement is 38 spaces, and 24 are provided. And the commercial parking is close. Forty-nine spaces required, and 41 are provided. There is a potential deficiency of 22 spaces, but the zoning bylaw, the parent zoning bylaw for the district, does have an allowance that when a traffic study is provided indicating that different uses overlap in their periods of peak use, that the parking can be shared. A traffic parking study has been submitted indicating that 23 spaces are eligible for that type of sharing. So staff will be coming forward with a covenant as required by the zoning bylaw to implement that sharing. And as mentioned, the Waterfront Park, eight spaces are provided, one of which is accessible. The remaining variance on this project is for bicycle parking. There is a deficiency of 26 spaces. There are 390 spaces required for the project, which if you review the underground parking plans, you'll see that the bike parking does take up quite a bit of space. But as we reviewed the project with the applicants, we felt it was better to have a variance of the bike parking than of the parking spaces assigned to the units. So for the next steps on this project, we do need to send out notices for the bicycle parking variance. And council consideration of the development permit itself is tentatively set for December 15. Prior to issuance of building permit, there are things required: provision of landscape security, a noise abatement report detailing the proposed construction methods and mitigation measures, a Section 219 covenant for the shared commercial and visitor parking, and an amendment to the LDA regarding no upper-story commercial use. And another minor item is the district needs a stat right-of-way for maintenance access to the stormwater outfall that crosses a corner of this property. Additional things required prior to issuance of occupancy permit is completion of subdivision to divide this lot in half, a surveyed stat right-of-way for public access to the trails, parks, and public use areas on this property, three car-share vehicles with a surface agreement or cash equivalent, and completion of the rental housing agreements. The 55 non-market housing units and 50 market rental units are referenced in the LDA, and those are intended to be secured in perpetuity. The 95 market rental units, which is what OSA has brought forward in this project, they have agreed to a housing agreement for a 25-year minimum period. And my understanding is that OSA intends to remain as the sole owner of those units, and that will be an item that is also secured in those agreements. We need a covenant securing the daycare space and the play area landscaping, and a stat right-of-way for a permanent maintenance access to the stormwater outfall that runs down through Waterfront Park. So that's the end of my presentation. Hope with a little luck I can get back on the screen.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Turn it over to council for questions now. Council, who wants to kick us off here?
Thanks. I'm just curious about the impact if we, you know, Moto doesn't work out, and so we put money into the active transit budget. Does that mean we permanently lose those spaces for some sort of car-share use? And I'm thinking as we move towards autonomous vehicles and needs to support possibly a slightly different business model, but some sort of car-sharing thing in the future. So what happens?
Through the chair, you know, this is something new. We haven't actually worked out the details. It's a good question of what happens. We hadn't expected to hear that news from Moto, that they're not they're not certain when they're going to be able to put more cars on the road. So they're being very cautious, and I think with COVID, their business model is under review. I think we can write the agreement so that in such a way that all of those issues can be reconsidered. And Jonas, you may want to add to this. This is something we've just been discussing recently.
Yes, so Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that what's in question is whether there's an operator that would be able to take on these car shares, but the car share, the parking spaces for the car shares would need to be promoted.
Through the chair, and I'm not sure we're exactly understanding one another, but I'll try on this. With car shares replacing parking, five spaces are replaced by one vehicle, but one space still has to be assigned for that car-share vehicle to park. So there will always be three parking spaces. Those have already been shown on the plans. So there's a net, I guess, replacement of actually 12 spaces rather than 15. And I think our agreement with OSA will be written such that it doesn't have to be Moto. It could be other car-share companies or formats. You know, Moto is currently in Squamish, but it will be a couple of years before this building is ready for occupancy. So there is some time to resolve that as to whether it's going to be vehicles on the road or bringing funds into active transportation. This is something that's done in other communities. I guess the city of Vancouver being one where they do have an allowance for cars actually being physically provided or putting the money in a reserve account, not necessarily for active transportation, but just sometimes there's a delay in putting cars on the road depending on the demand for those vehicles. And you know, what Moto has told us recently is the cars are not, you know, the uptake hasn't been as great as they had hoped.
Okay, thank you. And my concern was just if we are taking a different direction, that we aren't also losing those dedicated spaces for some sort of purpose, and just wanted to check on that. The couple other things, the housing agreement that we're considering for the 95 market rental, would that is the understanding that that would probably preclude us from applying a rental zoning sometime in that period? Is that the general idea? And it would be exclusively through this agreement that we would secure those as rental, and it would only be for that 25-year period to be determined afterwards?
I can answer this question, Susan?
Yes.
So the market rental agreement will not preclude the district from applying rental zoning, let's say, once that agreement has expired. It's, once the agreement has expired, it will be no longer in effect. So at that point, you know, whatever the legislation is governing, rental tenure will apply.
Okay, thank you. And then the final one for now. You know, I'm not so concerned about whether the commercial space is first and or second floor, but have we given thought to expectations around what portion is still office as opposed to retail? And I'm just thinking of the wages and who's going to be able to work in those locations? Is it people who are living there and that sort of mix? Or are we thinking we're fine with just pure retail in that whole space?
Through the chair, the zoning provides for both. You know, the zoning is quite broad. It allows for retail, office, restaurants, all of those types of things. And the land development agreement doesn't commit them to office or zoning or any particular mix. It's really left it up to the zoning and that broad mix to, I guess, basically let the market decide what's going to go in there.
Okay, fair enough. I guess my feeling is that the second floor requirement does sort of push people towards a little bit more office use, and so I have some concern about, you know, not having something to mitigate that loss in terms of requiring some portion of office on the first floor if we go that route.
If I can just add to that. So I think we can certainly add, when council considers the amendment to the land development agreement, we can add, we'll have discussions with the applicants, but we could add a requirement for a certain amount of office space to be at that bottom level when this motion comes back to council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner, followed by Mary Elliott. Go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Reyes, thanks for providing a high-level overview of the bedroom distribution for the units. I'm curious if we have any clarification on that bedroom distribution for the non-market rental units specifically?
Through the chair, yes. I didn't provide that information in the report, but it is available on the plans. And I will certainly bring that back when we bring this back to council. I don't have it at my fingertips. The slide that I showed, actually, I think that slide is repeated in the staff report, does indicate the distribution of the non-market rentals. They include studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. And unfortunately, if I were to go back to my slide, I'll probably lose the meeting, so I won't do that now. But we do have that information, and I'll make sure we highlight it in the report back.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you. And then I was just curious if the square foot calculations that are included for the non-market rental, that 70 meters squared, do those include the deck area or is that just the internal living space?
It's just the net living space. So that's the, yes, the land development agreement references the net area. But I will double-check that and bring that information back. I'm fairly certain that it doesn't include the decks.
Okay, thanks. And then a question about the vehicle parking. I appreciate that we've had Moto come in and explain some of the confusion or some of the challenges that they've had to date in terms of uptake. And I'm still of the mind that this is a bit of a chicken and an egg, and if they have more cars available at some point, then they might get more uptake. But in light of trying to secure that potential in the long term and recognizing the challenges with some limited parking, I'm curious if we've talked about ensuring that the car share program would take over some of the tandem parking spots and then allowing the non-tandem slots to be for either the commercial and/or residential use. That's fairly common to see in the city is that the car share programs use kind of the tandem spots, and then that frees up some of the others.
Through the chair, that's a good suggestion. Because there's three, it's a bit, three parking spaces will be required for the car shares. That's awkward, but certainly two of them could be assigned to car share.
Okay, awesome. And then one more if I may, Chair. Just on the bike stall variance, it's a fairly substantial number of bike stalls that are requested for the variance. I'm just curious if, there's two questions here. One, if there's any Class A bike stalls that are available for the commercial units or if they're all being reserved for the residential units? And two, if we've explored the opportunity to increase the Class B bike stalls to try and make up the difference for the Class A bike stalls?
Through the chair, the bike stalls for the commercial areas are provided in the upper parking lot area, and those meet bylaw standards. They're a bit hard to spot on these detailed plans, but they are distributed through the upper parking area. So the commercial areas do meet the bylaw requirements. In terms of increasing the Class B stalls to make up the deficiency, I guess the idea of the residential bike storage is to provide people with secure places for their bikes that can be locked away. And the design requirements in the zoning bylaw require them to be fenced and locked. And so that's why they're located in the lower area. I'm not sure that would be a trade-off for people being able to park their bikes in the upper commercial areas. There's a lot of bike parking. You know, I think until we saw what this looks like on a large project, hadn't really appreciated how much space it takes up. But there is a great deal of bike parking available, and I'm sure there are going to be some units that don't make use of it.
Is that, are you good for now, Counselor Stoner?
Yeah, I just saw Mr. Valanescu's hand.
Yep. Sorry, I was, if I could just add to Susan's response, I think that that's a good point. And maybe we could look at, at least look at providing maybe more or better commercial parking at the ground level, maybe more covered commercial parking. So that's something definitely we can take back and take a look with the applicants.
Thank you, Ms. Valanescu. Follow-up was if there was any way even, appreciate that they're not one for one. Follow up was if there was any way even appreciate that they're not one for one, but if we can move towards more covered, uh, class B parking, uh, bicycle parking, then that might be, uh, at least a little bit more amenable.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Elliott.
Thank you. Ms. Stratus, I didn't see where the distribution of one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom was for the non-market housing, but do you recollect that it is a good distribution?
It's, um, the, I've broken them down by buildings and so maybe this is not exactly the, the way to break it down for council's questions. But the building 3B, which is 105 units mixed market and non-market, has a reasonably good, um, distribution. The focus is on one bedrooms and there are some two bedrooms. So there are 20 bachelors, 51 bedrooms, 15 two bedrooms and 23 bedrooms. So that's a reasonably good distribution, although definitely they're oriented to the one bedroom units.
Yeah, I think what Counselor Stoner are getting at is how many of those are non-market? Like, how many of the three bedroom are non-market rental?
Okay, I will, I will get back to you with a finer breakdown of that. I just don't have it at my fingertips. I think actually all of them are, but I will double check that and get back to you.
That's fair. And just confirming that after 25 years, Bosa probably could stratify those 90 units or they could continue to lease them. They'll have that option?
Yes, um, after 25 years, they would be able to do either one of those things. They would be relieved from the commitment to keep them as rental housing.
Okay. Is the daycare part of the retail space being provided? Or is that in addition to the 2,400 meter square?
It is part of the total 2,400.
And then what is the traffic pattern like? Are there spots reserved in the surface parking lot for them? How are people dropping off kids, picking up kids? Where is that in relation to the parking that'll be reserved for the park? How does that all flow with that back parking lot?
There's an unusual provision in your zoning by law that, um, when there's a shared parking agreement, as there is proposed for this surface parking lot, um, spaces can't be reserved. So that's a kind of an unusual clause in the zoning by law. I think practically speaking, um, we've, we've recognized with the applicants that, um, probably five spaces need to be reserved for the, for the daycare. And two of those five should probably be short-term drop-off spaces. So we will be, um, working with the applicants to, to do that. It's, um, I just have to figure out how to overcome that unusual clause in the zoning by law about not reserving spaces.
That is very strange. Okay. I know there's a ramp on, on this, the, the building that's further south. Does that, so if, if I have a walker, if I'm on, in a mobility device, can I then access all the way across without changing grade? Like once I, but I have to access the higher grade from that corner because there's not a ramp at the 3C building.
That's correct. There is a staircase, um, adjacent to the park that, the 3C building, but there is no ramp there, there isn't room for one. So that single ramp at the corner of Laurelwood and Koho Rockway, um, is the, is the way to enter the site from that corner. You can also enter it at a level grade from Koho Rockway. The main, um, multi-use trail is level. But if you're going directly from that corner into the site, yes, you have to go up that single ramp, but then it is level around the buildings. There's perimeter walkways around the buildings.
So if I come off the waterfront walkway, so I'm pushing a stroller, can I use the Greenway Trail to get up and into that, that building area?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so that's kind of the ramp up on the, the 3C side is through the, the park.
Through the Dyke Trail, that's on the edge of the park. That's correct. And that, that meets up on a level grade with the multipurpose trail that runs through the entire development.
All right. And we're paying attention to those grades so that like a wheelchair could get up there or a scooter or someone pushing a stroller?
Yes, that's correct. I think grade, reviewing grades has been a big part of the process over the past months.
Have staff read the Metro Parking study that is referenced?
Through the Chair, yes. We have read that and that, that's what the zoning by law requires is a professional engineer to submit a report. It does seem reasonable. The, um, that parking study actually has three sections to it. One part of it deals with the shared uses at different times. And two other sections of that report recommend a reduction in visitor parking rates compared to what, what has been found in other lower mainland municipalities that visitor usage is actually quite low. And the third recommendation from that study was to simply reduce the rental parking rate to one space per unit. Because the, because the shared parking seemed reasonable and fulfilled the parking requirements for this site, we didn't go down the path of recommending reduced, um, residential parking or reduced visitor parking, as was recommended in that study.
Well, one of the things is that, you know, it says right in the introduction that Bunton Associates has prepared a rationale, which basically is weird wording. It sounds like a justification. So here's the parking you want to provide. I'll create the rationale for, to prove that, that you can be right. But also the assumptions in this report, I think, have to be challenged a little bit. And, and don't get me wrong, like, I get that parking can be a red herring, but, but one, we're not Metro Vancouver, so we don't have endless cabs. We don't have ride hailing. We don't have transit in this area. We don't have bike share programs. We don't have car share programs. So like all the things that make living in, um, in an apartment in Metro Vancouver are not the reality here today. So that's one of the assumptions that I find weird. And then they use Buckley, our Buckley Avenue project as, as the rate for parking. But Buckley Avenue is based on rent geared to income and some deeply subsidized suites, which I don't know what the below market rental is on these buildings, but I don't think it's rent geared to income and I don't think it's deeply subsidized. So, so again, I think that sometimes we have to challenge the assumptions that are being made in these parking studies, even if it is still in the end going to suggest that, that we waive some of the parking requirements. It still has to match our context and, um, these, these buildings will be in place before we have transit. These buildings are, are mostly market rental. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that we're not doing an apples to apples comparison and we're relying on Metro Vancouver statistics in a community that is extremely car dependent right now. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm, I, you know, I just think we have to take a look at the rationale sometimes and make sure that it actually matches the Squamish context. Anyway, I'll stop there, Chair. Thank you.
Susan here, if I could just respond to that, um, I, I agree with the points just raised and that was some why we didn't follow up on the recommendations for reduced parking. For instance, using the Buckley example or the lower mainland examples. That's, that's why we did not use two of the three, um, recommendations from that report.
I think our community would be happier if they see that in the staff report more clearly. Like, just spell that, spell that out. I realize the recommendation you're bringing forward is just for the shared commercial use and visitor parking, but, um, people do read those and I think it's important for us to challenge those. So people know that we're looking after sort of the Squamish context, not the Metro Vancouver context.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. I've Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor French, and then I have myself on the list after that.
Thank you. I know the name, uh, Koho Rockway. Uh, I just, just for the benefit of the public, Koho Rock is the giant boulder underneath the south side of the highway bridge. Koho Rockway won't take you there, but it's an interesting reference. We hope to be Koho fishing there again in future. I am pleased to see the attention, uh, throughout this waterfront landing, um, process of attention to railway proximity guidelines. And I'm aware that it's being done with the, uh, working with the acoustical engineer. I do trust that strategies are being pursued at this location beyond building envelopes and attributes of, acoustical attributes of building envelopes, such as layouts and so on, as are referred to for other considerations like solar exposure. I think at this location, noise exposure is an extremely important issue. The reason is, is because of the proximity for northbound trains to intersections on the north side of this development. And that's just something to live with and something we all do, and including far away. There's a lot of noise from that location with train whistling. Moving on, I'd like to echo, uh, Mayor Elliott's comments regarding the traffic report. Uh, I share all of the points that Mayor Elliott has made. I'll quote from the Bunton Report, uh, briefly. "The context of waterfront landing is supportive of non-anime wheel uses and may be comparable in this regard to many of the Vancouver area sites that Bunton surveyed." Well, I think in the bigger picture, we have to be mindful of the patterns of where and how far away people work in Squamish and how they get there. They are different circumstances and in the lower mainland, and I support Mayor Elliott's comments entirely. I'd like to refer to a couple of comments coming up in the Advisory Design Panel, uh, review. First of all, there's comments regarding the massing and height of the building, somewhat a little bit concerned or critical comments. I actually don't support those. I think that this site is where higher density and larger building forms are appropriate. I think that we need to, uh, make optimal use of this site. It was an expensive site, that is, we've lost some very precious, um, uh, land for, uh, other uses, including for economic development. So this site needs to be used optimally and with appropriate densities. And I think that this is where we're headed with this particular phase of the project. I would like to comment on another Advisory Design Panel issue that's brought up, and that is now quote, uh, reconsideration of the light gray due to weathering issues drab look in winter. I've quoted from the Advisory Design Panel minutes, and I'd like to make it just a very general comment. I'm concerned about color palettes, not only in this development, but throughout, uh, our new developments that we're, we are, um, addressing in, over the last several years and ongoing. Squamish has over, can have over 200 days of rain a year. And I'm seeing a sameness in the color palettes, uh, across multiple developments, including this one. And I think the Advisory Design Panel has picked up on at least some of its members. I am concerned in a general way that we need to be mindful of what kind of signals are coming from our development permit guidelines, where they come from. I can tell you they came from 2005 and the people that wrote those guidelines don't live here anymore. They refer to colors matching Squamish natural aesthetics and so on. Those are written a long time ago and maybe it's overdue for a review. As I sit on a fifth or sixth story, uh, floor downtown and look around, all these buildings have very similar colors. And I don't think that, uh, I think we missed the opportunity for creativity and just a fresh thinking about where we're going in this aspect of our, our advisory, of our development permit guidelines, signals that we send. Following on that, uh, there is a, and these are general comments, uh, please to staff. And, um, there is a reference to marine industrial, uh, aesthetic, if you like, in the architecture of this development. And I don't mean to be critical of the developer or the architecture, architects involved. And I know that their sympathies are sound and the efforts that they're making. However, I do not find this as authentic to Squamish. And I, I think that again, we, we should be mindful of what kind of expectations or, uh, language we are presenting. Where did they come from? I think we should be conscious and aware of this. And I'm not saying the outcomes are going to be poor, but I don't think we can refer to the, these, uh, attributes of the architect, archelectonics of these buildings as in any way authentic. And maybe that's not what we should be trying to do anyway. I guess in summary of what I've just been saying about the development permit guidelines, maybe we should rethink how much creativity and room for creativity we are leaving to our development, developers and our designers. I'll leave it at that. These are then very general comments.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, um, Counselor French, uh, and then myself. And just a note to council, we are running a little, uh, behind, uh, here. So we're looking to move towards, um, some sort of recommendation from, from this, but, uh, Counsel French?
Chair, uh, I have good news on the timeframe. My questions about the Bunton study have been asked and answered. And I'll just, uh, reiterate, uh, what we've heard from Counselor Anderson about the mayor's initial comments. I too have concerns about that study and, uh, just don't know how much value it brings to us in light of its Vancouver central centric context. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor French. Also, the, the Bunton study, I, I appreciate staff's interpretation of and use of all the sections of. So like, um, I would appreciate some more detailed analysis, uh, to be included with, when it comes back to us. As I, I feel that, uh, staff and council may even be on the same page with that particular piece. On the reserved parking, parking issue and the lack of being able to reserve it, I'm sure there's a create, there's room in the bylaw to allow for management of the spaces. I'm thinking, uh, time limits, uh, or available for drop-off use only during these hours or, or something along those lines as a way to work through that. So, um, I'm sure staff has contemplated such, such things, but I thought I'd put that one out there. I'll go back to Mayor Elliott. I saw, I saw your head. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just want to echo, um, some of my colleagues' comments about the concern about not protecting office in this development. So there was a push both in the C4 zone and when we rezoned this to have that sort of activated street level retail. And then the, um, higher paying employment professional office on the second floor, so that you got, is on the street, uh, during the day, residents above to then use those, um, facilities at night. But then you had, while residents might be out at work, you had the professional office to continue to activate the retail spaces during the day on breaks and, and lunch hour. So, um, I, I, like, it's such a hard trade off, trading rental apartments for office space. But, um, the whole point is provide those higher level, higher paying jobs. Uh, I, I, I think that with my colleagues, I think there's a way we need to look at this. I, I just want to go to the DP area guidelines, DP area 13. Um, under design and site planning guidelines, it says each phase of the dump development shall provide a unique architectural character and design. repetitive or monotonous building appearance. But then the, the staff report, the similarities in trying to pick up.
Mayor Elliott, one second. Oh, there we go. I think we solved the issue. Nevermind. Thank you.
We're picking up the, um, the similarities from the townhomes and the buildings, which was phase one. And so isn't phase three supposed to look a little bit different to phase one? And so to Counselor Anderson's comment, like, could we lighten the, the colors on those buildings? Could we make it look a bit different? So I'm seeing two things. I, DP area guideline that says each face should look slightly different and buildings that are being compared to the townhomes that are already built. I thought you were on mute, so I can't hear you.
No, we're good, we're good now, Ms. Stratus.
Okay. Yeah, those are really good questions. And I, I would mention that I think we went through three or four design and color iterations of these, of these plans. It's been a particularly challenging project in that question of whether to look completely different than the townhomes or whether to. than the townhomes or whether to fit and reflect those townhomes has been a big part of it, as have been the colors, as was mentioned by councillor Anderson. I think we will take this away. I, we did have one version of the project that did not have wraparound roofs and had flat roofs kind of quite different than the, the rest of the project. And Jonas may want to chime in here, but it was not something that staff really felt was a good fit at all. So it is definitely, the guideline of providing a unique character for each phase is, it is a challenging one to work with. I guess when we did see the buildings that had no relationship to the rest of the development, they did not work particularly well.
Yeah, there's probably a, maybe a happy medium to strike or, anyway, just, I think it's something for the proponents to reflect on. Councillor Anderson's comments and, and the DPA guidelines. But thank you for your answer.
Councillor Pedigill.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of other comments I wanted to call in. I was very pleased to see that, as I understood, the, all the private residences and so on would be fossil free energy. The, the amount in the public spaces, I guess the shared spaces is still significant at 29%. And, and so, you know, I know it's something I frequently call out, but I feel like a lot of developers are taking steps in the right direction and just want to keep, keep pushing and trying to accelerate that. And, you know, do we want to resolve it now or in five years? Because I think that is the, the issue, and I would prefer to see us resolve that, that now. I, I take my colleague's comments about the parking and, and the staff's rationale for not taking all the recommendations for the BUNT report. One of the things I really liked about this development, that when I looked at the drawings at least, it, I see a very strong focus on walkability. And it looks like it would be a really great place to be on foot. And I think with our pedestrian bridge, I, I do have some hesitation about not enough employment on the site. But I think with that bridge and the attention to walkability that I see here, I think this is a really positive thing. And in that sense, I'm, I would be much more comfortable giving up a bit more parking, vehicle parking than bicycle parking. And I take the points about Squamish's context, but I, I'm really focused on Squamish's context, where it needs to be in 10 or 20 years. And so with the walkability and those things, I think that bike parking is really, really important. And I just want to thank the developer for the, the attention to walkability here, because it looks really good. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedigill. Councillor Stoner.
Thank you. I just have a clarifying question based off one of the mayor's earlier comments or questions. And is the unit, the building 3C unit, which is now being proposed as market rental, but only for potentially 25 years, is it taking advantage of our priority process as being 100% market rental?
I can speak to that. So the application, as with previous waterfront landing applications, is kind of being, it's proceeding out a stream with the rest of the applications because of the complexity of the site and, and the complexity of the application. The applicants are paying extra fees for, for, for process that they're doing.
Thank you. And all right, well, I'll just make some quick comments. I realize we're over time. I support my colleague's comments about some concern about the loss of office space. And I'm, I'm not familiar enough with the land development agreement, but I am curious about the ability to use the daycare space as square footage against the commercial space and if that's actually allowable through our land development agreement. And if so, then may we need to look at that in future land development agreements and clarify that those should be separate. As I'll just reiterate my comments on some concerns about the lack of bike stalls and appreciate that they're requiring a lot of space. But it would be great to see some sort of creative alternatives coming to the forefront as, as a trade off there. So whether it's more covered bike spaces, provisions for bike share program. I think there's ways that we can start to support alternatives there, if that's what's really necessary. And then another really minor one that I wasn't entirely clear on from the DPA guidelines was number 25 regarding the covered patio spaces and whether all the balconies had the ability to be covered or not, which is just some clarity that would be helpful to have brought back in the next iteration of this. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stoner. Councillor, the motion we have, the staff recommendation is that the community, the whole, receive November 10, 2020 report from community planning on forthcoming waterfront landing development permit, number 540 for information and feedback. Mr Valniscus or Ms Stratus, that feedback, how would you like to do the feedback summary on this? I imagine there's some extensive notes here. Mr Valniscus?
Yes, Susan, I'm not sure if you've been keeping notes. I've been trying to keep notes. So maybe I could suggest back to council what we've heard.
That, that'd be a good starting point. Thank you.
Okay, so the first one was ensure flexibility of these, the car share spaces in the development and how they will be used in the future. We also heard that there should be some office space requirement in, in both of these buildings. We've also heard more information to be brought back on the bedroom distribution in the market and the non-market buildings. We've heard comment that tenant parking spaces could be used for two car share spaces. Increase or improve class B stalls potentially to accommodate class A variance. So this could be achieved through either things like covering more of the class B spaces. More information on childcare pickup and drop off flow, as well as spaces that will be used for that. More clearly identify which traffic study recommendations are accepted and why. And then we've got proximity to rail and consideration in the layout of, of the units. Rationale for design and color scheme with respect to compliance with development permit area guidelines, as well as information, more information on covered patio spaces.
Councillor, does anybody feel that anything important was omitted? Councillor Stoner. Are you moving the recommendation then?
I'm moving the recommendation, but.
Councillor Stoner moves. Mayor Elliott seconds. Comments if any? In that case, I'll call, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed if any. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Councillor, we're running late, shocking as I know that is. I would like to hold our, to our 45 minute break, so we'll come back at 1 o'clock. And if someone could pass, staff could contact the delegation to let them know the, our adjusted schedule. That would be fantastic. Thank you. So with that, we are on a break until 1 o'clock. Thank you.
We are live. Thank you, everybody. Welcome back to District Squamish Committee the Whole. Today is Tuesday, November 10th. I'm councillor Armin Herford and as the acting mayor this month, I'll be chairing this meeting. And on our agenda, we are on to item five, delegations. And we have a Public Health Overdose Emergency and Overdose Prevention Services presentation from Chris Van Veen, Vancouver Coastal Health Regional Director, and Maureen McCall. And I will leave, who is the executive director of Squamish Helping Hands Society. So, thank you for being flexible, everyone, with our time. Our morning was a bit, ran away on us a little bit. So, thank you very much, and I will turn it over to you.
Okay, great. Thank you councillor. So, I'm just gonna try to share my screen here. Does it have to be delegated on your end? Oh, now I'm the presenter, okay. Can everybody see my slides there?
Not yet.
This is promising.
Yeah, I feel like we're getting close, Tim.
Okay, how about now?
We are good.
Okay, we're all set. So, I'll start off by introducing myself. I'm Chris Van Veen, the Director of Strategy and Public Health Planning at Vancouver Coastal Health. I say public health, so in the office of the Chief Medical Health Officer, where the most of the overdose emergency response funding and governance sits in our health authority. So, we're a regional program and work with communities big and large across VCH to implement the provincial overdose emergency response structure, which we're gonna talk a little bit more about today. So, I've been coming up to Squamish for the last year or so to help Maureen implement a community action team that's gotten up to lots of great work that we're gonna, we're gonna fill you in on today. I think it feels like it's overdue in terms of giving you an update on what's been happening. So, we're really happy to be here to present. Maureen, I don't know if you wanna say a couple words before we start?
I think you're on mute. Are you still?
No, you're good.
Thanks for having us. I know this is a topic that we've all been wanting to talk about and is a hot topic that is important that we deal with as a community. And so, it's really appreciated that we have the time to let you know our thinking and to let you know our planning and our strategy around this. So, thanks for having us.
Okay, and so with that, feel free to step in and ask for any clarifying questions, or we can save them until the end. But I'm, what I've presented, what I've, you know, pulled a slide deck together on is an update for you on the state of the overdose emergency. So, some of the epidemiology that we've seen, particularly the more concerning rates of overdose that we've seen across the province more recently in the context of the COVID pandemic. And then a little bit around what we're doing about that, what we have been doing about that for the past few years and what initiatives we're looking to scale up in communities. And then we're gonna leave some time at the end for any questions that mayor and council might have for us. So, I'll skip through to the next slide. Some of you may have seen this data. This has been published by some media outlets over the past little while. What I've charted here is sort of the trajectory of overdose deaths that we've seen in the Vancouver Coastal Health region over the past few months. And really to highlight there, you'll see coastal urban and coastal rural are the health service delivery areas relevant to you. Squamish is located in what we consider to be coastal rural. So, you can see so far in 2020, we've, we've recorded, or the coroner's services recorded 13 deaths. But if you look down below at the bottom right-hand corner, that graph is gonna show you the comparison of deaths from January to September. That's the data that we have available to us at present this year compared to last year. And so, you'll see that really, you know, I think coastal rural is based on this data and some additional anecdotal reports of deaths that have happened more recently on track to sort of fit the rest of the trends in the province, where you're gonna see overdose rates similar to 2016, which, which was the highest number of overdose, 2016, or sorry, 2017, 2018 was the two highest years for overdose deaths in BC's history. I think we're on track for that provincially or to surpass that and also locally. So, I mean, I think that's why we're here before you today to talk about what more we can do is that the numbers of overdose deaths have been increasing. Let's change the next slide. This, I've pulled to highlight for you the impacts that the COVID-19 public health measures have had for the overdose crisis. So, as you can see, you know, I think, you know, I'm someone who's been involved with the overdose response since it was declared in 2016 and a variety of leadership capacities. And, and I think for us, at the end of last year, at the end of 2019, we were feeling that a bit optimistic about the trends, that they were heading in the right directions, that we were seeing deaths sort of come down. You can see there, you know, double-digit but not triple-digit deaths to round out the second half of the year. We hadn't seen double-digit deaths since the end of 2017 prior to that. So, we were feeling cautiously optimistic that many of our interventions were working, and those interventions were working, which I'll, you know, I'll get to in a few slides. But you can really see, starting in March, that I've highlighted and read there, that's when our COVID orders came into place and our advice from public health surrounding, encouraging people to physically distance, to self-isolate at home if possible, to reduce the size of your bubble. All of these things are really important and great things to prevent COVID transmission, but not so great for people who struggle with mental health and addictions, and particularly dangerous for people who frequently rely on the illicit drug supply in their day-to-day. People using drugs alone is the most dangerous thing you can do in the context of widespread fentanyl contamination. And I think what we saw in March was less visits to overdose prevention services, less visits to treatment sites, and more people using alone at home in very risk environments. And that did translate into, you know, pretty extreme rates of death, including, I think, June there was the highest month we ever recorded in BC for overdose deaths. So, you know, this is to show you that we are still very much in the midst of the overdose crisis, although the COVID-19 pandemic is what's dominating the news cycle these days. To put this, to represent this another way for you, you can see the red line there is when the provincial health officer, Dr. Bonnie Henry, had declared the COVID-19 pandemic in March. And the green represents COVID deaths attributed to COVID-19, and the purple is deaths attributed to illicit drug toxicity, so overdose. And you can see just month over month that by and far the fatalities that we're seeing, but you know, when we compare these two emergencies, is that overdose is killing many, many, many more people than COVID. And yet, I think, has been to some degree lost in all the media attention surrounding COVID. I think, you know, certainly in public health, but also lots of housing organizations like Helping Hands and other community-based organizations are really feeling this in the day-to-day and are really looking to expand services, improve services, and do new things so that we can start to lower the numbers of overdose deaths. So, I'm gonna switch gears now and just talk a little bit about what we are doing to prevent overdose deaths, what's working, what's not, what we need to scale up. And the first thing, and it's the most basic, many of you will have heard about naloxone, the overdose reversing anecdote that BCCDC has been distributing in communities around BC. I would say pretty aggressively for the past five years with lots of success. Many, many people have been trained, some of you may, may have been trained. Our local community action team has done a lot of great work around pop-up training events and public education around the lock zone. There's been a variety of initiatives. Many supported housing sites are handing out kits to residents and encouraging them to check in with each other to promote a sense of safety. So, many, many thousands of these kits have been sent out in all communities in BC, but certainly in Squamish as well. The other most important intervention, and you know, it's one of the particular importance for us to talk about today, is supervised consumption or overdose prevention sites. You know, in my early twenties, I worked at Insight when it was the only one operating in Canada. And, you know, I think we felt a great sense of pride that that service was groundbreaking in terms of its ability to save people's lives in terms of overdose, but also for its ability to decrease rates of HIV and HIV/AIDS infection. And also, you know, I think many sociologists and others have studied these sites for the benefits that they bring to sort of street disorder and general community safety by allowing people to have a safe place to come and, you know, discard harm reduction supplies safely and have a warm place where there's train staff there to help build a sense of community and address other people, you know, people's additional needs like housing and social support. So, we really have been scaling these up in the context of the overdose crisis. When it started, we only had a couple sites. Now, we have many, many more, so including the mobile overdose prevention site, which is that photo there. That's a renovated van that we've turned into a overdose prevention set on wheels, which has two booths that people can consume their substances at or and/or access social supports from staff who man the vehicle. We also have the Maple Monson overdose prevention sites, the overdose prevention society one, Sister Space overdose prevention site, it's a women's-only site in the downtown east side, one at St. Paul's Hospital, and one soon to become a P. Yale Town in downtown Vancouver. For me, you know, much of my work has been working with smaller communities in the coastal rural part of our region. So, I spend a lot of time in Squamish. I spend a lot of time in places like Powell River, Seashell, Gibson's, working with them to get these services in place. And over the past couple of years, really through their community action teams, we have been able to get a service running in Powell River. They had a standalone overdose prevention site, which has now moved to the interior of a pre-existing drop-in center. It's been fantastic in the community. Lots of outreach has gone into ensuring that it was a success and that neighbors and the business community and others were on board with that. It's garnered a lot of positive media attention. I think that a lot of local staff who have been involved, both from the municipality, but also the health authority and nonprofit organizations have been quite proud of. And then similarly, we've recently launched a service in Seashell in their shelter. So, that started off as just being accessible to residents of the shelter, but since then, recognizing the need for a publicly available service, we have opened that service up to anyone who wants to come in Seashell. And I've seen quite good take-up. And again, that site's been reporting into the community action team with, up there, which includes reps from, you know, RCMP, the district, various nonprofit organizations, first responders, other first responders. So, you know, both those services were new for us in terms of operating services like this in smaller communities, but both have definitely been a success and have reversed multiple overdoses and connected participants to addictions care. The other things that we're doing around overdose prevention are housing overdose, housing-based overdose prevention services. So, these are sort of like peer witnessing projects. We did have one operating in the temporary modular, where if you were gonna use drugs and you didn't wanna use alone, you could ask a neighbor or a peer that worked in your social housing site to observe you and have the lock zone onboard in case you overdosed. Those have been effective in many housing environments. Also, to have OD prevention policies in place, just at a bare minimum, in places like drop-in centers, healthcare facilities, just to make sure that staff are aware that overdoses are happening in the community and that they're prepared to respond to them. We have guidelines that we've developed for organizations on this front. Obviously, I spoke about naloxone. The trainer naloxone has been another success. I developed a program where we go into construction sites and train local occupational health and safety workers to deliver harm reduction education and overdose awareness to construction workers who have been identified as a group at high risk. So, lots of targeted interventions like that. Safer Washrooms Checklist, another one we've been promoting with both businesses and nonprofit organizations, municipalities. Overdoses do occur in washrooms. People tend to, especially people experiencing homelessness, seek out washrooms as private places where they're able to use their drugs. That can result, obviously, in them overdosing. And if someone isn't, you know, someone doesn't find them quickly or isn't prepared to administer naloxone, there have been deaths in washrooms. So, we have a safer washroom. So we have a Safer Washroom Checklist that our nurse educator team developed that we've been helping local businesses adapt to, and it's been a success as well. The Lifeguard application is a smartphone app. I pulled a photo there, you can see on the bottom right-hand corner. You might have seen this in Squamish. Our community action team coordinator, Jenna, had bought some bus shelter ads and put these up around town, because we do think in more rural or suburban environments, this smartphone app is another way in which people can use drugs discreetly, but also in a way that's safe. Basically, it's an egg timer and you activate it on your smartphone. And if you don't sort of snooze the alarm after it goes off, it triggers a direct call to BC ambulance who attends the scene. The app's been a great success and they've intervened in many overdoses across BC. And then, you know, the other one is just really local boots on the ground. We have our Squamish MHSU clinic just up the street from City Hall, where we offer harm reduction supplies and education sort of during normal business hours, Monday to Friday. Another new thing that we've done, and this is, I would say, a pretty significant change in the way that we approach care for addictions, for sure in our health authority, but also provincially, where we've developed this overdose outreach team that supports clients to access treatment and other services in a very rapid, responsive way. So if someone presents to an emergency department and now has an ambulance call, it can trigger referral to this team who follows up. We started it in the downtown east side, but have since expanded to increase capacity in coastal, including Squamish. We've got an overdose outreach worker that works out of the MHSU clinic, who's been great in terms of really having that time in his work plan to pound the pavement and go track down people who might need care, and then to assess their care needs and work with them to find something that works for them. And then also locally, what our preferred choice has been to integrate these overdose outreach team workers into existing intensive case management teams who are able to provide a broader series of supports for people who are struggling with addiction. So that's also, I think, been a great success in the last year or two in Squamish. Sort of the, you know, the menu of services that the overdose outreach team targets, so navigation to appropriate services, helping clients get on those waitlists, you know, get to the top of them if need be, find housing, support to access opioid agonist treatments like methadone or suboxone in ways that are convenient for them. So finding pharmacies near they live, finding them a GP that they like, and who, again, is in close proximity to their home address. And then also to prepare people for if they do revert back to using street drugs. Relapse is a part of addiction, and so providing some overdose education is huge with those workers as well. You know, as I said, there's been slow but steady improvements to the treatment system of care. Vancouver Coastal Health is the only health authority now to have activated a regional addictions program that's focused 100% on addictions and improving the system of care. Locally, we have the Squamish Opioid Agonist Therapy Clinic that operates three days a week and then once a week, alternating in Whistler-Pemberton. This service is staffed by nurses and local addictions physicians who are able to prescribe opioid agonist medications for people who are seeking to decrease their reliance on the illicit drug supply. At present, we have about 60 clients on this service, but I think as we build out this harm reduction infrastructure, including overdose prevention services, that will, it'll help us identify additional clients that might benefit from the service, and so hopefully we'll see that number grow. I referenced earlier that I do think that, you know, although, of course, the death rate is high and we have a long way to go, I think, in terms of investing in our system of care and building more coherency in that system, we have done a good job at implementing the things that we know save lives. So this is some modeling that was released by the BCCDC analytics team in 2008, and it demonstrates the number of deaths that they estimate we collectively in the province, including nonprofit organizations, health authorities, people running overdose prevention services, have averted due to interventions like Take Home Naloxone, which is the dark blue, overdose prevention services, which is the medium-colored blue, and opioid agonist treatments like methadone and suboxone, which is the lightest colored blue. So the green is, those are deaths that did occur, but sort of above that are all the deaths that would have occurred had we not put those interventions in place. And why I show you this now is I think, you know, the slide with the overdose outreach team and the focus on the MHSU OAT clinic is important. And I think that's where we're seeing a lot of potential in terms of saving people in that lightest blue quadrant. But at present, in Squamish, like many other smaller communities, there is no overdose prevention service. And so that medium-colored blue that you see there represents a lot of people whose lives are saved is a sort of missing piece of the pie. And that's something that everybody at the community action team identified early when we were sort of scoping out local service gaps. So again, you know, we've been meeting as a community action team in Squamish for about a year now. The Squamish Community Action Team has broad cross-sectoral membership, including the district, Squamish Nation, first responders, nonprofit organizations, First Nations Health Authority, VCH, and a number of people with lived experience of substance use or family support members. And really, you know, these teams are part of the provincial overdose emergency response structure. They report up to the overdose emergency response center through me as your regional, the lead of the VCH regional team. And the teams are funded through that pathway as well. So, you know, so far, we've done lots of great things like the bus anti-stigma ads that you're seeing in the bus shelters there, a number of training events. But the team has also obviously identified wanting to support additional overdose prevention services as a part of their mandate and would like to contribute some funds to that in addition to the ones VCH has earmarked. And the last thing that I'll leave you with before turning it over to Maureen for a quick update on Under One Roof is just that the key to this work is building peer capacity. And by peers, I mean people with lived experience of accessing substance use services and support. These are people who are able to identify the gaps, who know what works and what doesn't, and who are, represent great untapped potential in terms of the labor force to help us deliver these services. So to those ends, we've developed at VCH a street degree in overdose prevention, where we offer 16 modules of a variety of training that prepares peers to work in the overdose response. And so should we be able to get a service up and running in Squamish, the kind of co-benefit of running this is that we get to help people who are, you know, have a history of struggling with substance use or currently do, to find meaningful paid employment that helps build self-esteem and build skills that then can be used in other ways in the labor force. You know, once we've sort of solved the overdose crisis and we're able to deactivate some of these services. So with that, I'll invite Maureen to give us any updates on Under One Roof.
So we're just getting some, I'm getting some feedback. Is everyone able to hear Maureen? Is it exclusively me, which is totally possible, if you can stay in niche? Were you, was everyone having problems? Can I get a thumbs up if it was good? Or it was bad?
Maureen must have two sources going.
It was bad. Do you have two microphones there or something, Maureen?
No, I, no.
Steph, do we have any resources we can help Maureen navigate our systems here?
Get Maureen to run over.
Yeah, how mobile are you, Maureen? That's a very practical solution.
Recession for five minutes while she walks over.
Maureen, would you like to do that? Is that okay? Can you join? Okay, so if we can make room in, somewhere in chambers or for Maureen, she's gonna... She can come join us in chambers, I think might be the best place. Thank you, thank you, Maureen. So we'll take a five-minute recess while Maureen repositions. And sorry for technical difficulties, everybody, but we'll be back in five minutes.
Okay, we are all set. Armin, stand by and go.
Okay, we're back from recess. From recess, I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you. Maureen's joined us. I love our small-town, low-tech solutions to some of these complex technical problems. Maureen made the journey, the block, to join us at Municipal Hall. So Maureen, who I think we're just going to join, we're just going to have audio, not video of Maureen, correct? Okay, we'll turn it over to, back over to Maureen and Chris. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me all? Okay, I just wanted to take up from where Chris was speaking, talking about overdose prevention services and how that relates to Under One Roof and what we've been doing at Helping Hand. And I think, you know, what's important to realize is that we have been implementing a range of services, as Chris has talked about, everything from peer witnessing programs to, you know, what VCH is doing, to Helping Hands is also, you know, providing harm reduction supplies and, you know, and encouraging people to use the Lifeguard app, which I think is really important for people who are at home, you know, from the different target populations that we might not see on a daily basis. So one of the big changes is with the opening of Under One Roof, we are able to provide overdose prevention services in terms of a housing, you know, because it is a housing unit or a housing facility that has 24-hour staffing and can provide education and services to our participants who come there, whether they live there or whether on a drop-in basis, but mostly for those who live there. So, yeah, so Under One Roof now is housing up to 60 people. And with that, folks are able to use, consume in their units. And so that, you know, in itself means the peer witnessing program that we had at the bridge can now come over to Under One Roof, and we can continue that service. And then the overdose prevention site that we're talking about is yet another piece of the puzzle in terms of our own community response to an incredible health crisis. Under One Roof is basically a facility that is incorporating Housing First, Harm Reduction, and Trauma-Informed Practice. And it's all of that in effort to help people with substance use and mental health difficulties become and live more stably. The Housing First approach is basically providing a safe place where substance use and mental health struggles are not an impediment to housing, to housing and a humane and caring support. The Harm Reduction approach, basically, we, you know, I think, you know, everybody kind of has an idea, but bottom line is to keep people safe, minimize death, you know, and disease and injury from high-risk behaviors. So we implement that wherever we can. And I think as a community, you know, that's what we need to do and we need to continue to do as we see the rise in numbers. Trauma-informed practice is added to that because we don't want to treat people as though they're standalone and nothing comes before them. Trauma-informed practice really allows, creates an environment where, you know, that provides a culture of safety and empowerment and healing. And it begins, it begins with recognizing that, you know, something's happened to a person. It recognizes that they didn't get here on a straight line. So we know that when there's trauma in people's lives, it has a long-lasting emotional, psychological, and physical impact. And that if we leave that unchecked and if we don't treat people from that place, it often leads to unhealthy, high-risk behaviors and a lot of pain and agony for people. So, yeah, so and then in terms of this being a range of services, for us, that means that we can try to have an impact on different populations. So not only the population that attends Under One Roof, not only the population that attends VCH, but a home-based population. And particularly in COVID times, you know, there's a lot of isolation. So we want to ensure that the whole range of services applies to our community in a healthy, impactful way. And I'll leave it there. I'm sure we're going to want to talk a little bit about community engagement and that sort of thing, or community, how we will put that forward in our community. But I think we live in a community that is, you know, there's a few squeaky wheels for sure, but we also live in a community that's incredibly tolerant, incredibly compassionate, and understands that we're as weak as our most vulnerable, right? And as strong as all of us together. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Maureen. Chris, sorry, Mr. Venveen, was there anything additional from your end or we turn it over to council for questions at this point?
No, yeah, happy to answer any questions. I'm sure you've got lots, so I'll turn it over to you.
Council, we'll start with Council Race, follow by Council French.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering if you could speak to how these sites have been able to exist in built-up neighborhoods, for example. I mean, the relationship with residents that are in the neighborhood, does it change the character of the neighborhood? Does it reduce street crime, increase street crime? Can you speak to those types of issues?
Yeah, I will. Like, you know, this has been a huge learning curve, I would say, and I've had the privilege of having sort of a front-row seat to all of this. Traditionally, we have only been able to operate these services sort of in Vancouver's urban core in the downtown east side. But as a result of the provincial ministerial order in 2016, we were able to rapidly implement overdose prevention sites in communities around the region. So the difference between an overdose prevention site and a safe consumption site is that the former operates under a provincial public health order rather than under an exemption from federal drug laws. So these are temporary services that are intended to respond to the overdose crisis. That's what we're looking to put in place and see to sky. And we've had to put those in pretty rapidly in response to the deaths. So, you know, the supervised consumption sites require that the applicant or the holder of the exemption undertake a long community consultation process prior to implementation. But because of the nature of the emergency, the provincial order does not require us to do that. Now, that being said, every time that we've put in one of these services in a smaller community, we have done community consultations. So, I mean, the community action team is the best forum for that. We get between 30 and 40 reps from all the relevant stakeholders at those meetings. We keep them abreast of every operational detail. We get feedback from them on what the service should look like, any complaints that might be coming up, those sorts of things. They help us draft communications material for the community. So that's one avenue. You know, in Powell River, they did do a little town hall with some neighboring businesses and a school that actually thought went quite great. One of the key actions that came out of it was this faith-based school that was up the street from it asked that we create a substance use and harm reduction education module for their grade-nine class, which I thought was an awesome sort of outcome that we were able to come in and explain to students sort of substance use and why these services were needed and do a bit of health promotion work. So that was great. We do put in place, and Maureen and I would look to put in place, a sort of formal complaint process for any complaints that would come into the neighborhood. So there would be a key point of contact, Maureen and/or myself, who would commit to responding and writing to any complaints that came up from neighboring sort of stratas or businesses within 24 hours. And then we would work with site staff to address them. But I, you know, I think the communication plan is key. What we found and what the research shows, and again, like, the research has been done in the urban centers. We haven't had the time to do them in the smaller communities, but that the sites don't increase street disorder or sort of litter discarded harm reduction supplies. In fact, they decrease it because people can come and get rid of those things at the site and we safely dispose of them. The other thing that we would do as a part of the operational plan is to do needle and litter sweeps before opening and after closing every day, just to ensure that if there is anything around the community, we're being proactive. anything around the community, we're being proactive about picking, picking those things up and being good neighbors. But, you know, yeah, I think you do need to be mindful of neighboring stratas and businesses and their needs, and the fact that there's, you know, you have a library downtown, and socializing is a range of services that are used by all kinds of different populations. And, I mean, the one thing, the other thing that I would note is that, just looking at the population density in Squamish, and then I'm comparing it to Seashell to Powell River, the sites I don't envision would be super busy. So, I don't think it would be as busy as sort of a downtown east side site, like, you know, we're going to see a few people each hour, but there's not going to be sort of crowding or an influx of people loitering. I would be very surprised.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
No problem. Counselor French?
Thank you, Chair. My question was about hours of operation. I think I heard it's 24 hours, but I'm just looking for, no, it's, well, Maureen's giving me head nods and shakes. So, I don't know who best to answer, but what are the hours of operation for the overdose prevention service?
I can respond to that. It's not 24 hours, by all means. We haven't exactly landed on the times, but I think probably late afternoon into the evening, seven days a week. So, probably till 10:00 PM, I think, Chris, we talked about.
Yeah, we're going to have to tweak it based on the budget and the staff and complement, but that sounds about right. The other thing that we have that's unique under the crisis are the BCCDC dashboards that give us a variety of data on when people are overdosing and when people are using drugs. So, we are able to go in and look, like, over time, what are the peak times for ambulance calls in Squamish or in the Cedar Sky corridor, and then we can tailor the service hours around that. So, to start off with, I think that looks like the busiest window, but we may want to tweak that a little bit depending on feedback from the participants themselves. That said, I'll say anecdotally, both in the city and in smaller communities, people tend not to come later in the evening. So, anywhere kind of past 9:00, the visit volumes really go down. So, I don't think we'd want to keep the service open too late into the evening, probably. That's my instinct.
Okay, Chair, I have a follow-up, please.
Go ahead.
I would like to hear whatever you can share about the consultation that has taken place so far to this point for this Squamish center. And I'm thinking specifically about planning conversations with RCMP and other provincial agencies. Has any of that consultation taken place at this point? What can you tell us about it if it has?
I can start, Maureen, and then if there's anything for you to add. So, locally, we've, over many, many Community Action Team meetings, talked about the gap in services, the gap in overdose prevention services, and identified the need for sort of more permanent solution to it. So, all the, you know, RCMP sits at that table, as does ambulance, all the nonprofit service providers locally, VCH staff locally, addictions physicians and people with lived experience. We also have a subcommittee of the Community Action Team, including Squamish Nation, VCH staff, the CAT Coordinator, Helping Hands, and a couple of people with lived experience who have kind of taken that conversation aside and had even a deeper dive around operational planning. And then provincially, you know, in essence, I showed you that data where kind of, as soon as the COVID measures came in place in March, we saw dramatic spike in overdose deaths. That prompted the ministry to release additional funding to health authorities. And that funding came with some strings attached. So, they recommended additional overdose prevention services in certain key geographies that had seen high rates of overdose deaths. And coastal rural, so, which includes Squamish, Powell River, and the Lower Sunshine Coast, was identified as one of those high priority areas. So, the ministry sort of strongly encouraged me to pursue this option locally. It just so happens that we'd already been talking about this for years at Community Action Team. But we haven't gone out to sort of the broader community, like invited business owners and just sort of average members of the public to it yet. It's really been driven by the key stakeholders in the overdose response, more broadly in the community. But people are certainly aware of, this is a goal and as a concept, and I think people are pretty excited about it.
Thanks, Chair.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Counselor French. Counselor Penningill, followed by Counselor Stone.
Yeah, thank you. Two questions. The first one is on the who and the what. So, do we know yet, in the context of COVID, has there been any changes in who is overdosing? Is, you know, a lot more first-time users or that sort of thing? Have we seen shifts there, and in terms of what they're using? Is it still all about fentanyl and opiates, or is it stimulants and other things as well? Or can you speak to that?
That is an excellent question. I would say the overall demographics have been similar to what we've seen over the past couple of years in terms of male, female, and then broken down by age. But we have more recently, so in the last year, probably, seen more people particularly smoking and particularly smoking stimulants that may be contaminated with fentanyl, but smoking deaths in general, so people smoking opioids as well. And also, what we've seen in the coroner's reports, higher-than-normal toxicology in the reports that they've completed on cases that have died since March, so since the COVID measures were put in place, probably because the border closures have had an impact on the drug supply, making it less predictable, I think. So, the rates of extreme fentanyl concentration, in many cases, are quite a bit higher than they were before, which leads us to believe that the drug supply is more dangerous right now, in combination with people using alone more often. So, the lesson that we've learned, and the funding from the ministry, did encourage us to pursue safer smoking options. Only about half of the sites that we have right now offer safe inhalation, but this one, our goal would be to have this one offer safe inhalation in an outdoor area underneath a tent that our medical health officers are sort of comfortable with in terms of both COVID safety plan and occupational health and safety plan.
Okay, thank you. And the other, you know, as I understand it, aside from keeping people alive, a goal is to hope that people will move into treatment. But where are we in terms of having adequate sort of options for the person who's ready to try something different? Is that adequate now? Do we see on the horizon that the funding is coming along with this?
I would say it's not adequate. You know, we're the only health authority that has a regional addictions program with dedicated funding that's been going for about a year and a half. They're doing great things. There's still a lot of gaps and a lot of problems to be worked out in the addiction system of care. But I would say in our region that we're on the right track, and many of these new investments, so I highlighted the overdose outreach team worker. To me, that's one of the most key resources any community can have in the context of the overdose crisis, because unlike a clinic-based service where someone has to either get an appointment or come and drop in, this triggers an automatic referral. So, you know, if someone attends an emergency department or has an ambulance visit, we can find out right away that someone's had an overdose event. Also, with having an overdose prevention site, we can identify that, so the workers at the site can say, hey, you just overdosed. You know, are you open to having a treatment conversation? And if so, then Rob, the overdose outreach worker, can literally come down the street, if it's during business hours or the next day, and engage that person in a conversation about care. Now, Squamish does have the OAT clinic, so they are able to take additional patients to get them connected on opioid agonist treatments. And over the coming months, we do expect to have more prescribers. The province recently made some regulatory changes that do allow nurses now to prescribe opioid agonist medications, which is a game changer, I think, in addictions medicine. So, we hope to have more capacity, and I think the more that we can identify people and have these resources to proactively follow up and not sort of expect that people come to us first, the better we're going to be. And Squamish is in a good place because they have that resource, and the worker's been well-integrated into the intensive case management team. Also, that obviously, the MHSU clinic is in such close proximity to the, you know, one of the options, at least in terms of the proposed site. So, I think we would be in good shape on that front here, and this is one of the reasons why, you know, this preliminary site that we've identified is exciting for me, just given that proximity and how quickly sort of someone could theoretically get access to treatment post-overdose.
Thank you.
Chair, Maureen has a thought on this, too.
Yeah, just to add to that, you know, this is a conversation that leads us to possible opportunity and deeper dialogue around, around treatment and around response, because we don't have a detox, you know, nearby. People who want to go to detox are going to the city still. We actually don't have a treatment facility nearby. Those are throughout the province, downtown east, well, throughout Vancouver and throughout the province. So, it is something we do need to be looking at as we look at that whole sweep of services. And I think, I think one of the things that is, you know, Under One Roof is doing is we're trying to be creative. So, some of our emergency shelter beds, we're actually, you know, kind of referring to them as ALTI beds, and that is alternative access, so not the typical emergency shelter access, but for opioid users and people at high risk, being able to watch them more and have them in our, in our building longer and that sort of thing. And also, working with VCH for the possibility of having rapid-access beds that could act as a quick, home-like detox service. So, we are really working together to ensure that we get a full spectrum of response to this, to this problem.
Thank you for that context. Counselor Penningill, are you? Counselor Stone?
Thank you, through the Chair. Thanks so much for being here and for the presentation. The numbers are always so stark, and it's very helpful to have this forefront in our conversations, and so important that we're turning some attention to it, and for all the work that you've been doing. Also appreciate the differentiation between a supervised consumption site and overdose prevention site. That was going to be my first question, so that's really helpful to hear as well. I'm sorry if I missed this, but I was reading through the report to council, and you've mentioned a little bit in terms of a preliminary site selection, and I'm just curious if we are able to discuss where that might be, if that's going to be in the Helping Hands building, or the Under One Roof building, or if that's still being discussed.
I can respond to that. I think we would, you know, we've been looking at the firehouse where Helping Hands was before we moved over to Under One Roof, and that that is an ideal location. It allows us also to have an outside smoking consumption area, and it is, you know, it's in the neighborhood, so, you know, as Helping Hands is going to be managing the site, it's pretty important that it is nearby. And having said that, not in the same building, because we want to be able to, I guess, there's a lot of reasons for that, but it, we hope to attract people who might not necessarily attend at Under One Roof, and just to give people options, you know, in terms of where they go. Chris, you might want to follow that up.
Yeah, no, that's great, Maureen. And yeah, I'd been in the space, you know, a year or so ago, when it was still being used as a shelter. It does seem optimal, I would say, in terms of the square footage. We could have a really good COVID safety plan there, and the entrances and exits are quite discreet. I think it's actually much better in terms of the, you know, bricks and mortar compared to some of the other sites that we're operating right now. So, it could be great. And as Maureen says, I just think the proximity to her staff over at Under One Roof, but also to our VCH, MHSU staff is really key, and they're going to be able to really help the site staff and managers make sure that the service is a success.
Counselor Stone, anything for you? Maureen?
Thank you. Those numbers are so sobering, and so I appreciate you bringing them, making them public here. This is often an issue that people think doesn't happen in smaller communities, but it very much does. Just with regard to the site, I know, maybe this is for our staff, that we have a real estate and facilities master plan, we have plans for the library, we may know that this site might not be able to be used as an overdose prevention site long, long term. So, is there sort of a timeframe that staff would be comfortable with if we were to move this forward?
Hi, I can speak to that. We do have other uses indicated for that site, but not for another about 14 or 15 months. So, we'll be good until sort of the beginning of 2022 for that site.
Okay. And then, I imagine, Chris or Maureen, there's, as you say, you can respond to complaints or concerns as they come in. But what is the outreach that would happen if we approve and start moving forward with this location to the community?
Yeah, I think, you know, Maureen and I and the overdose prevention subcommittee from the Community Action Team have this on our agenda to discuss what the game plan is. What I saw worked super well in Powell River was a joint announcement, not from the service operator nor from VCH, but from the Community Action Team, where we had all those organizations sign off on kind of a press release that stated, here's the new service, it's exciting, it's, you know, we're building out our full range of substance use support services, this is a partnership of the Community Action Team, VCH, and Helping Hands, and sort of here's the organizations in support listed with their permission, of course. And that really, I think, did indicate to the community that this wasn't sort of a couple of rogue nonprofit organizations or health authority doing this, that we have been thinking and talking about this with multiple stakeholders over a long period of time. And that in that press release, we could, you know, reference some of the things that we would do in terms of putting in place strategies to mitigate any concerns that might come up, and then also just offering or inviting a sense of transparency in terms of offering up Maureen or I to answer any questions that people or businesses might have about the services, because I think it's reasonable for people that have questions about these services, they're new, and I certainly see part of my job is to help educate the public about these services and their value.
Yeah, thank you. Chris, can I just ask another question? I was reading statistics about this health emergency, and a quote from Dr. Henry said that most of the overdoses happen in men. Many happen at home, and their friends and family don't know that they're using. So, who uses overdose prevention sites? So, are those folks that are sort of hiding? Is this targeted at them, or are we targeting the Life App at them?
Yeah. It's a really good question. I would say both. You know, sometimes I drink a beer in my house, and sometimes I drink a beer at a pub. There are going to be people who are going to use at home for a variety of reasons. They're more comfortable that way, there's privacy for them. Many of the people who are dying at home are dying at home nowhere near an overdose prevention site. So, I'm thinking, for instance, of the Fraser Health region, where there may be one overdose prevention site in Surrey Strip, but people are dying 100 kilometers away from it, you know, down near White Rock. And so, those people don't have any options. But I do think that if people have options, they are likely to come to an overdose prevention site for a number of reasons. Where it'll offer drug checking there, so even if they want to come once and then use at home, coming once to check their drugs is massively, is a massively wise and safe thing for them to do, and we can give them those results there. They may come and use once or twice there, and then, you know, use once or twice at home that day. So, it's a mix, but I'm a big supporter of the app as well. I was on the early team that developed the app and did the focus groups of people who use drugs to get their feedback on the usability. And I do think that intervention is going to work well for a population, particularly a population of working-class men who might not identify with some of the people who we sort of assume are going to overdose prevention services. So, I do think it's about all of these strategies at once, and in each community, what these Community Action Teams have been doing is taking an inventory of what do we have and what are we missing? The Lifeguard app's been huge, and we've done a lot of stuff in terms of getting donated phones and handing them out, and having staff at the MHSU clinic literally upload the app. donated phones and handing them out and having staff at the MHSU clinic literally upload the app on people's phones and show them how to use it. Um, I'm seeing that borne out in the data. So we have identified a bunch of unique users of the app in Squamish through the BC ambulance geolocation services. So that's been successful. Um, but I think it is about the, you know, kind of having the whole continuum, um, both and for people who want to stop using drugs. As Maureen says, you know, we need, um, all the options for people.
Yeah, thank you so much. You just realized just how important it is to de-stigmatize this illness and, and, uh, really help get, get people connected to support and safety and, and that potential pathway, um, out if that's what they're looking for. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thanks. Thank you. Uh, Councilor French, yes?
Maureen would like to jump in.
Well, thank you for that.
To follow up, agreed, um, uh, Mary Elliott, that, uh, it's going to be our job to de-stigmatize this, uh, so that people from all walks of life are looking at all the options. One of the, one of the populations that we noticed at one time that was high, um, high in use was a construction, uh, worker person. Um, we know we have lots of construction workers and lots of construction sites. Um, that, that was, you know, some, a conversation that, that we had, um, and, and the learning that we're, we're experiencing. So yeah, and he, and as Chris says, even if a person goes once, the opportunity then to, um, uh, teach them about other, other options and other avenues for keeping themselves safe is huge. So thanks. Thanks for asking the question.
Thank you for that context. Counsel, any further questions? Okay, so making some notes here, I've got a, I'd like to propose a, a motion, um, that council supports Vancouver Coastal Health and Squamish Helping Hand Society leasing the district facility located at three seven nine three oh, Third Avenue, which is a former Helping Hand site for those of you, um, until April 2022 for an overdose prevention services and related health services. Seconded by Councilor French. Um, I'll speak to it briefly. I, I think the, um, the service, uh, that's aimed to be provided at this, at this facility, I think was, um, much needed for, for our community as the various statistics, um, and the presentation, um, for us today clearly lays out, uh, we are, um, undergoing two health, uh, crises and, um, and the opioid crisis has thus far, I feel, has been, um, hasn't been getting its, its due attention in the last, uh, little while and, um, has actually been exasperated by the current COVID situation. So I'm happy to support this and thank you so much for everyone that worked on this to, um, to get to this point. I look forward to having this, uh, service inside our community. Um, okay. So I will happily be supporting that motion. Uh, Councilor French?
Uh, speaking in favor of the motion, uh, the chart that we saw earlier that compared, uh, COVID deaths to, uh, overdose deaths was eye opening for me. I, I had no idea that the gap was that large. And when I think about the resources we have put into, uh, preventing the spread of, uh, COVID-19 and the resources that we put into overdose prevention, um, it's, it's a world of difference. And, uh, this is overdue in my mind based on, on the statistics that I've seen today. So thank you all for, for your work in bringing this and, and thank you for, for pushing it the way that you have and, and bringing it to where it is today.
Thank you, Councilor French. I'll have Mary Elliott followed by Councilor Stoner.
Thank you, Chris and Maureen. It is, um, it was great to get an update on the, the work, um, around our community action team and, and all the different approaches that the province is taking because of this public health emergency. I think it's really important to always remind people that this was the first public health emergency. Um, and it does get sort of shuffled, uh, I think, under the rug, uh, because people don't want to face the reality or, or believe that, that drug overdose happens to other people. Um, but it is happening to our friends and our neighbors, their children, their sisters, brothers, parents. Uh, this is hard. I've been a very vocal advocate, um, to ask our community to follow the COVID-19, uh, public safety guidelines, public health guidelines, and I am absolutely committed to being just as strong in terms of my advocacy for this facility. So thank you so much.
Councilor Stoner followed by Councilor Pedengill.
Thank you through the chair. I too will happily support this motion. Um, I agree with much of what my council colleagues have said to date. Um, this is the first public health emergency and I think one of the challenges that we often bring up at municipal levels of government is, is the, uh, the downloading of, uh, costs and of work from provincial governments to municipal governments and, um, the fear of starting to take some of that work on. Um, but because this is a provincial, provincial health emergency similar to the COVID crisis, it requires a hands-on, all hands-on deck approach. Um, and so although this is a bit of an extension, um, into our foray of, of supporting, um, uh, health-related, uh, items, it is really important for us to do because it is, as the mayor just said, impacting our community members, our neighbors, um, the folks that we love. Uh, and so I think that this is an important step to take. I think we do have a facility that we can, that we can provide in the short term, uh, to provide, uh, overdose prevention. Um, and it's a facility where, uh, where Helping Hands has operated for, for over a decade. Um, it's close to existing facilities that we know are able to provide ongoing supports to the folks who might be using this facility. Um, and so I think from that perspective, uh, it makes good sense to make the site available. So thank you.
Okay, I had, um, uh, Councilor Pedengill then Race.
Yeah, thank you. I, I will be supporting this as well for, uh, the reasons, uh, my colleagues spoke about, uh, just want to add that I, um, sometimes find things like this a little bit frustrating because for me, they are an indication of missed opportunities to intervene, uh, and help people out earlier in, in a positive way. But, um, you know, we, we are where we are and, and so I think it is important to do the best we can to help our friends and neighbors and, and families and so on. So, uh, I will be happily supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Race.
Thank you, and I'll be supporting this as well. I think, um, you know, it is a, an appropriate location, particularly on a, on a hurry up agenda. Uh, it has, it's a site that has been used before, uh, for similar services. Uh, it is, it is managed or will be managed by, by Helping Hands, who I think have, uh, from my perspective, the confidence of the neighborhood, uh, in their ability to manage. Uh, and that's important, I think. I, I can understand concern of the neighbors, uh, but I think, you know, having Helping Hands involved, I think will alleviate a lot of that. Um, my view of this is, this is a medical need and, and we should be paying as much attention to this as we pay to other medical needs, uh, that we have in our community and our corridor, although we're not a health authority, we're a local government, but we still do advocate and we are concerned. Uh, and I think this is, um, one thing we have to advocate and be concerned about. It, it is, from my perspective, you know, one piece of a solution, and I'm hardly an expert in this, but, uh, I think the other we have to advocate for is legalization, uh, of these hard drugs to, to ensure, uh, more, um, pure supply, if you like, so we don't have this, uh, this kind of travesty going on that we see right now. But that's out of our jurisdiction, so not part of this motion, but we continue to advocate. So I will support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Councilor Race. Um, seeing no further comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, defending? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much for your work, everybody. Moving on, Counselor. I, I apologize for the pace today. The discussions have been so good, but we are running behind. So we're trying to find ways to be efficient and I'm scanning ahead on the agenda on how to do just that. So, uh, we'll just make it a group effort and move on to the next, um, the next piece. We do have an hour, a lot of time. Next up is item, uh, item six, staff reports, um, invasive species program. Um, and who will be leading this one?
That will be me and Carleen and I'm here with Caroline Ashikian and Claire Greenberg. We'll use us all on the net, but she'll still be, uh, part of this as well.
Okay, Ms. Luton, you take, take it away. Maybe we start with a round of introductions. Uh, we know where everyone is on the call and we'll go from there.
Perfect. So I'm Carleen. Uh, this is Caroline Ashikian. Uh, we are both environmental coordinators here with the district, Department of Engineering. Uh, we also have with us Claire Greenberg, who hasn't been elevated to a knowledge yet, but she is the director of the Sea to Sky Invasive Species Council as well. And so I will start with the presentation. Um, I'll be showing the slides. Caroline will, uh, provide a quick overview of our invasive species management program, uh, which is implemented in partnership with Sea to Sky Invasive Species Council. And then I'll present our two draft bylaws. Hi Claire, there we go. Um, I'll present our two draft bylaws. So we draft invasive species management bylaw and the draft, uh, pesticide and herbicide use bylaw. I will share my screen. You guys see the presentation? Yes, we can.
Yes, we can see it. Sorry, there was head nodding. I'm not sure if you could see those.
Yeah, I'm in screen mode, so I can't see anymore. Okay. There we go. So I'll let, uh, Caroline for the first few seconds.
Great. Thanks so much, Carleen. Uh, as Carleen mentioned, I'm Caroline Ashikian, environmental coordinator with the district and professional biologist. So I'll start off by talking about what are invasive species. So invasive species are plants and animals that are not native to our region. And as a result, they lack natural predators and they therefore tend to grow rapidly, outcompete native species, and they're very challenging to manage. They often require a dedicated management approach implemented over multiple years. Um, invasive species are a major threat to biodiversity, uh, second in fact, after habitat destruction by land clearing. Uh, they essentially create a monoculture, um, wiping out other, other species. Uh, and the, the economic and environmental impacts of invasive species are significant. These plants and animals can alter water flow. They can erode banks, damage infrastructure. They can increase fire hazards and contain substances that are toxic to human health. So essentially they're detrimental to ecosystem health and in some cases, uh, human health as well. Economically, the estimated annual cumulative lost revenue in Canada caused by only 16 invasive species is between 13 to 35 billions of dollars. And that's a stat by Environment Canada from back in 2004. And in British Columbia, the combined damage of only six invasive plants is estimated to be 139 million. Um, and that's a stat from the Invasive Species Council of BC from 2009. Next slide, please. Carleen. Okay, so the district's partnership with the Sea to Sky Invasive Species Council, which is abbreviated as SISC, so I'll refer to it as SISC, um, has been truly critical to the district's successes and managing invasive plants within the district. The district's been working closely with SISC since their inception in 2009. And through our partnerships, SISC provides the district with expertise on all matters related to invasive species, such as advise advising on current best practices. They provide training for our staff. They monitor and map invasive species throughout our municipality and undertake seasonal management and treatment of Squamish's high priority infestations. The summary of Squamish's 2019 invasive species treatment program were included in your agenda packages. Another important part of the district's partnership with SISC is the leverage to secure funding from grants, government agencies such as Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, and other major public landholders such as BC Hydro. These projects are often to manage and treat invasive species on publicly held lands within the district and also throughout the Sea to Sky Corridor. The district also contributes annually to the SISC partnership program as well as retains the SISC crew for our seasonal invasive plant control. However, it's important to note that the district's current budget level does not supply enough funds for SISC to survey, treat, and monitor all the high priority sites on district land. So the primary cause of spread of invasive species is through human activities, such as through movement of soil within or across properties, or dumping of garden debris into parks and forested areas. Prevention is the most efficient and effective way to manage new invasive species and the key is early detection and rapid response, which we abbreviate as EDRR. This is a proactive approach which prevents the establishment of invasive species through risk assessment, verification, containment, and eradication. And I'll turn it back to you, Carleen.
Thanks, Caroline. So through the following slides, I'll provide an overview of the draft invasive species management bylaw, including the species that will be included in the bylaw and prohibitions and enforcement options on that bylaw. So current provincial legislation, including the weed control act and the wildlife acts, controlled alien species regulation, offer species lists that are outdated and have no effective needs enforcement. So in response, over 20 local governments within southern British Columbia have adopted bylaws to regulate invasive species. In March 2017, council directed staff to develop a bylaw regulating invasive species. So since this time, staff have updated development from Area One to require a management of invasive species when lands within DK One are developed. Staff have also developed a soil management bylaw that requires management of invasive species when soil is being moved. So although these tools are incredibly important, um, they aren't solely designed to manage invasive species in our community. So as such, staff are bringing forth the invasive species management bylaw, um, that applies to the community at large, so not just development from Area One, and addresses invasive species proactively, so not just at the time of soil movement. So the draft bylaw defines invasives as those listed within the spheres of concurrent jurisdiction, environment, and wildlife regulation. This is largely because the district's authority is limited to this list. So this list includes very high priority plants, for example, knotweed, giant hogweed, yellow frava, like iris and blue stripe. Um, it also includes some potentially problematic animals such as bullfrogs and eastern cotton tail rabbit, among a variety of other species. So inclusion of the, and species that are not within the spheres of concurrent jurisdiction list would require ministerial approval, which can be sidelined free. So we're not proposing that at this time. The bylaw prohibits sowing, planting, cultivating, releasing, or allowing accumulation or spread of invasive species, as well as the sale of invasive plants and animals, and treatment and disposal of invasives that do not conform to best management practices as described in the bylaw. Under the proposed bylaw, the district may deliver a notice informing property, a property owner or occupier of the presence of invasive species. And this notice will include recommendations to treat the species and a reasonable timeline on which they are to comply. So the notice will be educational in nature with the intent of soliciting voluntary compliance. Should the owner or occupier not comply, the district may issue a fine up to $10,000 or may actually effect compliance by performing the work, invoicing the owner or occupier for the costs incurred, and if those costs are unpaid. for the costs incurred, and if those costs are unpaid, that the cost can be attached in the form of an invoice to the property taxes. So of the 20 or so invasive species bylaws that we've reviewed from other communities, all but one included the option to affect compliance and break costs, so it's quite common. So I'm now going to provide a quick overview of the pesticide and herbicide use bylaw. Notably, the term pesticide is a blanket term that includes herbicides, rodenticides, insecticides, et cetera, basically other substances that are used to control pests. Current legislation, including the Integrated Pest Management Act and Regulations, established conditions for sale and use of pesticides in B.C., though this includes things like vendor and user licenses, and applicator certificates, among a variety of other tools. And the goal of this legislation is to prevent unreasonable adverse effects. So in order to reduce non-essential and cosmetic pesticide uses, over 40 communities in B.C. have developed pesticide bylaws. The district has, currently has, a herbicide and pesticide bylaw that was enacted in 1980. It restricts aerial spraying and requires a license for application outside residential yards. And in 1986, the district enacted a policy limiting the use of certain pesticides on district lands. These tools are both very outdated, and in June of this year, council directed staff to bring forward a bylaw governing the use of pesticides and herbicides within the district 's franchise. The district's authority to regulate pesticides is provided under the spheres of concurrent jurisdiction, environment, and wildlife regulation. This regulation clearly defines limits of local government authority. So as such, there's little variation in the prohibitions within modern bylaws in other communities. However, the exemptions within these bylaws do vary greatly. So the district's authority, and hence the draft bylaw, is limited to the application of pesticides used to maintain outdoor trees, shrubs, flowers, ornamental plants, and turf on municipal lands or lands used for residential purposes. The district does not have authority to regulate sale or transport of pesticides, and there are some mandatory or default exemptions. And these exemptions include, uh, the application of pesticides that are listed as an excluded pesticide, and that list is held within the Integrated Pest Management Regulation. And there are also exemptions for the application of pesticides used to nourish pests that transmit human diseases or impact agricultural forestry, and the application on residential areas of farms, applications to buildings and inside buildings, and the application on land used for agriculture, forestry, transportation, public utilities and pipelines, unless those public utilities and pipelines are vested in the district. So because of this, items A through E have been included as exemptions within the bylaw, and this is very common practice amongst bylaws that have been adopted by other local governments. So the draft bylaw currently includes additional exemptions to allow the use of pesticides for invasive species, also for purification of water for human and animal consumption, and for treatment of pools and cots. And these are also common exemptions in other communities. And then some other communities have included exemptions for pests such as mice, rats, ants, and termites, and for preventing deterioration of hardscapes like driveways or pavors. And some communities have exempted specific portions of municipal land or municipal uses. These exemptions and others will be explored during public engagement to ensure that pests and invasive species can be effectively managed in our community while limiting potential negative impacts on human health, animals, and ecosystems. To aid in education and voluntary compliance with this bylaw, the district will recommend that vendors who sell these pesticides that are governed under the bylaw, that they post a notice at every sales display, stating that, that the bylaw exists and with a little bit of information about the bylaw. And this will be a recommendation as opposed to a requirement, because regulating sales is not within our, the district's authority as provided under the spheres of concurrent jurisdiction. So the image on the right here shows an example notice from equivalent. The district will also provide information about the bylaw and suitable alternatives to pesticides on our website, and there are many great examples of this in other communities. And as a last resort, the bylaw enables the district to use flat to issue fines of up to $10,000 for non-compliance. I'll now briefly review some existing municipal policies, implications, and the joint engagement plan. So the invasive species and pesticide bylaws are in line with numerous policies and objectives within the O C P, or Official Community Plan, and those were listed in the reports of council. Obviously, the most critical are the two listed here, which includes an objective that speaks to the need to prevent the use and spread of invasive species, and a policy that speaks to eliminating the use of cosmetic pesticides. The costs associated with the two bylaws is expected to be minimal, including some legal review, and the income generated by these bylaws specifically through fines is also expected to be minimal, as the focus will be on education and voluntary compliance. As for impacts on staff, these bylaws fall within the existing work line for environmental staff, but engagement will require some support from communications. And then site inspections and enforcement will require increased service by environmental staff, law enforcement officers, and the assistance from SISC or Sea to Sky Invasive Species Council. So lastly, I'll discuss the engagement plan. So a joint engagement plan is being proposed for these bylaws. And the list of stakeholders has been compiled and includes those that are listed here, so landscaping companies, garden supply stores, flower shops, pet stores, pest control companies, environmental consulting companies, contractors, and NGOs. And the number on the right of each of these items just says how many of these groups exist in our community or work in our community. So stakeholders will also include landowners and the general public, and of course, the Sea to Sky Invasive Species Council. As proposed, the engagement plan spans multiple levels of the IAP two spectrum. So staff will continue to collaborate with the Sea to Sky Invasive Species Council through ongoing communication with Claire, who we have here today, and professionals such as the groups listed on the previous slide will be engaged at an evolved level. So these professionals will be emailed the draft bylaw in a short survey and will be asked to provide comments. They'll also be invited to an online focus workshop. And then landowners and the general public will be engaged at an inform and consult level. So the draft bylaws and associated information will be posted to the district's website, along with an opportunity to provide comment and/or complete a short survey. And landowners and the general public will be invited to attend your virtual. So this engagement plan will be refined and then implemented hopefully throughout this winter, with the goal of having these bylaws in place for the 2021 growing season, so this coming spring. So on to recommendations. Staff recommend that council receive, receive this update today on the invasive species program, and then provide feedback on the draft bylaws, and then that staff bring forward both of these bylaws to public engagement. Now open the floor to questions.
Thank you very much. Brief this, your screen, yeah, there we go. Thank you. Let's get set up so I can see everybody again, and I'm sure there'll be some questions. Council, we'll start with Council Anderson.
In the interest of efficiency, I wanted to maybe offer a couple of brief comments rather than coming back at the end, and they will be brief.
Sure.
Just firstly, to complement the stakeholder engagement strategy that you presented, it's very rare to see it broken out like this, the effort that you've done to identify stakeholders and in a very detailed manner, and the kind of breakdown, if you like, of the IAP two implementation strategy. Congratulations, very impressive. I, in reading the report, I found it to be a riveting report, and I'm going to go back to 2018 and see what I can find. I want to, waiting for the next one too, and hopefully that will be a progress report, but my eyes are fixed here on the chapter concerning Lot 69. And there are a few things that I observe here, and that is the movement of fill and gravel that takes place to and from this area in the Chikai Phan as being of concern. And I think that for council, this is important to bring this to our attention, because we do have planning initiatives in this area. I think this is a very important feature for us to keep in mind. We have, there is a note, and I, we don't want to go back into the past, but there has been soil brought to Lot 69 that was not weed infested. And I remember that episode, and we don't want to go back there, but it's something that we should all be aware of, that what happened. The, uh, the, the district has a memorandum of understanding with the forest industry concerning Lot 69, and I raise this because you draw attention to, well, let's make a plan, if we're going to take, draw more fill from here. Well, that M O U states that we will not be moving fill from phases three to five, which is roughly the northern half of Lot 69, without further consultations. And those consultations don't involve invasive species, but now in my mind, they should, so that there is a pause on removing fill from there according to that M O U. I think there's some new considerations here. Finally, my question. Nearby, we have the Squamish Wood Waste Lease, which is district property, and I recall that some concerns were raised about the movement of fill to that area from the Lower Mainland. There's been a lot of fill accepted from the Lower Mainland there. And this was raised by my colleague, Counselor Peddingle, last year, but we've all been so busy and challenged, we haven't gone around to following up on discussing the terms of the lease and what may be involved with this. But perhaps we should, I guess I have a question then. Have you extended your focus to other areas where we are seeing a lot of movement and deposit of gravel? And another one is the Squamish Wood Waste Lease. Thank you.
Looks like Chris wants to take this.
Go ahead, go ahead, Chris.
To the Chair, um, I, I don't know that this is directly related to, uh, to the invasive species bylaw itself, but I do have some awareness of that file. So that, that, um, landfill is privately held and has its own certificate through the M O E landfill certificate, and it's through that that the, um, monitoring and certifying of, of items going into the landfill is so, so our land, our real estate team works with M O E to ensure that M O E is sort of, is, is following up with that landfill, and, and that's, I believe, the extent of our involvement.
Thank you. I only raise it in case we have some serious issues, if you like, regarding invasive species with the movement of fill there, but I thank you for your account. Thank you.
Counselor Peddingle.
Yeah, thank you. As I read the, the proposals for the pesticides and herbicides bylaw, I got the impression that it was sort of a blanket set of rules around pesticides and herbicides in general, but my understanding is there are significant differences in how quickly things break down, whether the neurotoxins, whether they cause cancer, can they get into the water supply? And so, um, you know, there, there might be significantly different opinions depending on what compounds we're talking about. So do we have a, a plan to go down the road of, of classifying these or a reason to stay away from that?
I think, to the Chair, um, I think that it gets, uh, quite scientific and nuanced, and there are a lot of different pesticides available. So, uh, what would be standard practice in other communities would be excluding the excluded pesticides, so those can't be managed through the bylaw, and blanking the remainder of them in. Um, there, I think, and then part of the community engagement will be looking at what pesticides are used in our community and for what purposes, how critical those are, can those be replaced, and what are the impacts of those specific ones on our community? So if through engagement, we learn that there are specific pesticides being used that are maybe of much lower impact than, or degrade more quickly over time than some alternatives, then we could look at adding some more nuanced exemptions or details within the bylaw that would speak to those.
I see a couple shoot up there. Mr. Wickham, do you want to start us off? And I think Ms. Greenberg has something for us after.
Sure, and I, I would just add to that, that in general, this particular bylaw is very tightly prescribed by the ministry, and that's the reason that you see very close similarities from community to community. And that includes the, um, blanket exemptions for what, for, for example, farming and that sort of thing. And also includes a list of exempt pesticides, which if you review it is, are very innocuous, where we would really be concentrating our efforts are on specific situations where we might provide an exemption. In general, we won't be digging into the neurotoxicity of various pesticides and all that. That's, that's really work that's been done many years ago, and it is, is updated and kept up to date by the ministry themselves, and we'll be leaning on their work.
Thank you, Mr. Wickham. Ms. Greenberg, did you have something to add there as well?
Yeah, I just, I just thought I would add, there's two additional sort of pieces of either legislation or, um, the, the physical label on each particular herbicide has really specific rules about where it cannot and can be used and at what rates. So Health Canada is really the go-to source for the information about specific types of herbicide, and then the Integrated Pest Management Act, the provincial act and regulation lays out a whole host of other regulations as they pertain to pesticides. So this municipal level regulation is really just one piece of multiple sort of other levels of regulation, I guess, just to look at it in that way.
Okay, thank you. And another question, and it's sort of two related ones. I, uh, it sounded like, um, we were suggesting that we would exempt water purification, pools, and hot tubs, and, and so I'm just looking if, if that is a recommendation or a requirement because of provincial law. And then I think related to that, like, what are we talking, does this, is this referring to putting chlorine in a pool so it doesn't grow algae, or are, are people putting other stuff in their pool they, they sort of need to do?
So to the Chair, um, that is an optional exemption. It is the most common exemption, um, along with water purification and invasive species. So the three optional ones that, that we've included in the draft bylaw, they're the most common throughout all of the bylaws that we've reviewed, so nearly 20 of them, 20 of the 40, so we would be the most recent ones. Um, I can't speak to these, I understand chlorine is used, and I understand that probably some other chemicals are used. I can't speak to the exact details of which chemicals are used.
Okay. Okay, that's good for now. Thank you.
Thank you, ahead, Mary Elliott.
Thank you very much. Before I ask my questions, if I drop out of this conversation, I've been requested on a call with the province at three o'clock, so my time is, is limited, so that's why I'll be leaving the call at some point. Um, just a quick question on the staff report, just so that I am crystal clear. Right at the end, before it gets to implications, it says the district will promote education and voluntary compliance by asking, but of course, we can't require vendors to post an informative notice at every sales display. The draft bylaw enables the district to issue a fine for non-compliance. Is that, that fine related to homeowners or people selling invasive species or people not posting information?
Oh, the, to the Chair, the fine is related to owners or landowners or occupiers, or sorry, in this specific one, the fine is located to application. So I, that would either be the landowner or, or, or occupier, provided that they are the ones that are applying it. It, it does not, um, it's not for sales, um, and it's not a build a notice. They're separate.
And can we fine, um, people selling plants that are invasive species? And can we fine people selling plants that are invasive species?
To the chair, it is my understanding that yes, and that would be how the fine would apply to sales. I can, I can see a more formal answer to that, but that, that is my understanding.
Okay. One of the things that, as I was reading through these bylaws, it said we could recoup non-paid fines through property taxes. I haven't heard of our ability to do that with anything else. So what, what allows us to do that here?
I believe, to the chair, I believe it is in the, the community charter that leaves us that as an option. I did speak to Blitstone and Associates about that, and it is very common in other bylaws. And when I spoke to our finance department as well, and everybody seemed to be in agreement that, that that is an option.
So we can't collect like parking tickets or other bylaw fines, but we could for this bylaw. Yeah, it's interesting because it's a way to recoup fines if we're allowed to do it. My final question, and maybe we don't have an answer for this today, is how do we put an equity lens across this? And so, you know, if someone is on an old property, has lots of invasive species, but doesn't have the ability to pay for the remediation, what happens then? And so we can further punish them through taking it off there or adding it to their property taxes. But I wonder if there's a, just, is there a way we can structure incentives? Or, or are there grants available through the province to help address this issue? For, in cases where individual homeowners don't have the ability to?
And then I think beyond that, I think it comes down to being fair and looking at that on a case-by-case basis. I'm not sure if, I, I have not heard of any funds available to the general public for removal of invasive species. I'm not sure if that's something where you've heard of before.
I know some areas in BC do a cost share program with landholders. So regional districts and some municipalities offer, yeah, a 50-50 cost share or a loan of equipment. So it's mostly in sort of more agricultural areas where it's like a farm program, where you can, you can borrow spray equipment from the municipality or the regional district. But in terms of sort of grants from provincial government, there's not a huge amount that would be for individual property owners, but that's certainly, certainly something that the district could potentially apply for as part of the invasive plant program. And I'm not sure what this is going to look like, but there was a $12 million budget line item in the latest economic stimulus response COVID plan, I can't remember what it was called. So I don't know if any of that will filter down to local governments. And that was specifically for invasive species. So we're waiting to see more details on that, but potentially there could be something in the future.
Yeah, we could probably spend all of that. But I, what I appreciate you saying is that there might be a case-by-case basis in which we have to be solution focused. And I really like Ms. Greenberg's idea of making equipment available, like making compliance really easy for our citizens, rather than making them go out and buy a spray or go out and, you know, heck, we could even provide the pesticide they need. Because we obviously, you know, can buy it in, in greater amounts, that sort of thing. So I just, I think we always have to be mindful that this has to be easy, not hard for people to, to follow the rule. And, and so we can loan them equipment. I think that's a great idea. Thanks.
Just one little mention there, there are some pretty strict requirements for private landholders to, they have to be certified. So there's some hoops to jump through, but I'm sure that can all be dealt with.
Thank you.
I'll leave that up to the smart people that are working on these bylaws.
Council, any further questions before we consider the staff recommendations? Seeing that, I'll look for a mover. Everyone benefit from reading these staff recommendations aloud? So we have staff recommendation that council receive the update from community planning and infrastructure dated November 10, 2020 on the invasive species program and provide feedback on the draft invasive species management bylaw and draft pesticide and herbicide use bylaw. And that staff bring the draft invasive species management bylaw forward to public engagement. And staff bring the draft pesticide and herbicide use bylaw forward to public engagement. So I suppose the piece here that we're, there is the provided, provided feedback. I had a bunch of, there were a bunch of questions I heard vocalized there. I'm just wondering if there is specific feedback that staff had, had noted that we can just vet at this point?
That staff had noted through the chair. So the feedback on the cost sharing with local government potentially, or looking at basically how to make compliance easy, whether that's rental equipment or assisting landowners in some way, that was one that stands out to me as a feedback. And then councillor Peddingill spoke to specific rules about specific pesticides. And it sounded like that was a route that we weren't going to explore based on the fact that that's covered by senior government agencies.
Yeah, I felt that question was answered satisfactory. Council, was there any other specific feedback on, on this topic? I, I did hear a lot of questions and it was very informative session, but I, I feel like we're, make it easy is our feedback at this point. Is there, we want to go deeper somewhere? Councillor Peddingill.
Well, just one piece of, of feedback is I, I do lean away from providing additional exceptions beyond what the province mandates us to. I mean, there may be some cases, but I, I tend to lean away from that. We, we found out we had a pet rat, I think, last week, and we've gone with the auditory disincentives for, for rodents. And we'll see how that works. But I think there are other options and sometimes a bit of a nudge to look at other options can be a positive thing.
Okay. Going to mover of these motions. And should we do them all together or do they need to be separate? Councillor Stoner.
We'll move all three.
We're moving all three together. Do I have a seconder? Mayor Elliott seconds. Any further discussion on, on this before we call the question?
I'll just speak to it very briefly if I may.
Go ahead.
And thanks to after bringing this forward, no doubt that it was beyond time to update these bylaws because some of them were very outdated. And as councillor Anderson spoke to, I think the community engagement plan is, is quite thorough at this point. And I look forward to hearing what our community has to say about the application of the bylaw.
Thank you. With that, seeing no further comments, I'll call the questions. All those in favor, opposed if any. Motion, motions carry unanimously. Thank you very much for your work, everybody.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we're moving on to our, our next item. Schools Independent Communities Fund. Kate Mulligan, our Economic Development Officer, will be presenting. And she's here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and Council. Thank you for having me today. I'm just going to switch over to presentation mode. Everybody can see the presentation?
We can. Take it away.
Excellent. Thank you. My name is Catherine Mulligan. I'm the Economic Development Officer for the district. And I'm joined today by Tourism Squamish Board Member, Corinne Savillard, and Leslie Weeks, Executive Director of Tourism Squamish. Also, I believe Louise Walker is on the line. She's the Executive Director of the Squamish Chamber. I will be presenting today. However, Tourism Squamish will be available to answer any questions that may arrive with respect to their operations. The objective of today's presentation is to seek feedback from council on recommended principles that would be used to guide a visioning process in support of revitalizing the Squamish Adventure Center as a tourism-oriented asset. So I'm going to provide a little bit of project history. In February 2016, the district, District Council endorsed Tourism Squamish to lead a project to refocus the Squamish Adventure Center as a hub for tourism development. And in 2017, the Squamish Sustainability Corporation, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of the district and which manages the building, allocated project funding for 2018 to undertake work, but elected that a different approach be used instead, engaging the District Economic Development Office in collaboration with Tourism Squamish to complete the report. In 2018, the project team secured Chris Media, a consultant to develop a framework to determine the best approach to increase tourism revenue and provide the greatest economic impact for the region, or rather derive the greatest community benefit from the building. In 2019, the report was completed and the resulting recommendation was made to revitalize the building for tourism promotion and as an economic development hub. Tourism Squamish was approached by district staff in 2019 to determine their interest in leading a visioning process for the Adventure Center as a tourism-oriented building. And subsequently Tourism Squamish has confirmed their interest in leading this process. Additionally, I wanted to mention that the Squamish Chamber indicated that they are also interested in participating in the development of this vision and a subsequent plan for the center. So where we're today, today we're presented with a unique opportunity to leverage a provincial funding, provincial funding to support the revitalization of the center. Tourism Squamish has since agreed to lead a visioning process, as mentioned. And to guide this effort, district staff with Tourism Squamish are going to propose a set of principles for consideration by council. Regardless if the district should pursue an application to provincial funding, for provincial funding, or a session application is pursued but is unsuccessful, district staff and Tourism Squamish will recommend proceeding with a vision, with visioning work and planning, a planning process for the Adventure Center in 2021. The funding opportunity, it's called the Tourism Dependent Communities Fund. It's been established by the province to assist tourism-dependent communities to create jobs and support economic development and recovery from the impacts of COVID-19 by developing and growing tourism subsector markets through investments in critical tourism infrastructure. So up to 19.4 million has been set aside as part of this fund and final approved projects. And the funding will occur in early one. Eligible applicants can receive a one-time, 100% funded provincial grant towards projects which demonstrate the following objectives and outcomes. The development and/or growth of tourism subsector markets, increases in visitation and generated tourism expenditures, strengthening the municipality's tourism offering, including expanding winter and shoulder season experiences, geographic and seasonal dispersion of visitors, where it encourages new business attraction and/or creates diversified economic opportunities, increases capacity to welcome visitors during COVID-19, and creates immediate job opportunities and long-term tourism jobs. This fund represents an ideal opportunity for the district in partnership with Tourism Squamish to apply for provincial funding to revitalize the building as a tourism-oriented center, while also maximizing revenue potential from the building. And at the same time, the district and Tourism Squamish have a unique opportunity to explore a long-term relationship in support of destination development, management, and promotion. I'm going to, the following slides provide a bit of a background on the Squamish Adventure Center, its performance and operational considerations, which form part of the basis for this visioning work. Situated on prime highway frontier real estate, the Adventure Center serves as a beacon for the community and visitors to our region. It was completed in 2006. The building is unique in that nearly 100% of all visitors to the region pass by the Adventure Center's location on Highway 99. An annual average daily traffic volume in 2019 was 11,813, with summer average traffic of 15,274. So this is a high-traffic location and we've seen growth in traffic year-over-year since 2011. Building amenities include visitor information services, a theater, a gift shop, cafe, with additional office and event space. Financial oversight of the building is the responsibility of the Squamish Sustainability Corporation. As I mentioned, it's a wholly owned municipal corporation of the district. In addition, the district and Tourism Squamish provide financial assistance for the delivery of service and general operations of the center. Tourism Squamish has been the operating organization of the visitor center space within the building and visitor servicing through a fee-for-service contract with the district. And there's a variety of tenants leasing space currently, including the Squamish Chamber, Tourism Squamish, Cedar Sky Adventure Company, Canadian Oak Backracing, and Cafe Eravaldi. Just to provide a little bit of information with respect to the visitor center performance overall, the Adventure Center visitation has seen consistent growth over the last eight years, between 2012 and 2019, averaging, with an average of 188,000 people entering the building annually and an average annual increase of 2% in terms of visitation. Across that same period, on average, 25% of the entrance, or just under 50,000, were serviced by Tourism Squamish Visitor Services. Those services included a mix of, sorry, those serviced include a mix of residents and visitors. The number of entrance serviced has increased on average by 25% annually over the same timeframe. In summer 2019, over 1, sorry, 28% of visitors to Squamish visited the Adventure Center. In 2019, of the 80,000 people who were serviced by the Adventure Center, 61% were visitors from outside of Squamish. Based on these percentages and the 2019 door counts, there was an estimated 76,000 residents and 120,000 visitors to the Adventure Center in 2019. Top service requests include maps and directions, attractions and tours, hiking the trails, and washroom locations. The Adventure Center is part of the broader BC visitor center network and receives a sizable share of total visitors. The center captured 15% of the 500,000-plus guests that visitor centers in the Vancouver coast and mountains region welcomed in 2019. And 3% of the 2.5 million visitor center guests across all of BC. The Adventure Center outperformed comparative locations, including Kelowna, Revelstoke, Vancouver, Osoyu, St. Campbell River in visitation volumes in 2019. All the above figure, all the figures shared include all qualified visitors to visitor centers across BC. This does include resident guests. Visitor center data is uploaded via Destination DC Visitor Center database. And all the participating locations use the same methodology for data collection so that it's comparable. In terms of the Adventure Center revenue and expenses, in its current form, the Adventure Center generates revenues through facility rental with long-term commercial tenants leasing office, retail, and food service space at the center. Since the center's inception, revenues generated from leasing space have fallen short of the expenses incurred to maintain and operate the facility. With its current business model, the Adventure Center presents a reoccurring annual cost to the district of approximately $100,000 per year. This is funded through an annual operating grant. You can see where it says DOS grant on the slide that's provided to the Squamish Sustainability Corporation for its operations of the center. So additionally, the district, as I mentioned, has contracted Tourism Squamish at an annual rate of $100,000 per year to provide visitor information services. The speed not only covers the in-person Adventure Center delivery. The fee not only covers the in-person Adventure Center delivery of visitor services, but also covers mobile and online visitor services provided by Tourism Squamish. The contract between the district and Tourism Squamish has been running expired in 2019 and has been currently on a month-to-month basis. Tourism Squamish also contributes between $40,000 and $68,000 annually in addition to the visitor services agreement in place with the district for the purpose of providing visitor information services. The district also contributes ongoing staff resources for the purpose of lease administration, general maintenance, and oversight of the building. And this is estimated at approximately $25,000 per year, although it's not reflected in the financial statements as if it's costs incurred to the district itself. The district also concluded its first phase of a district's facilities and real estate strategy in 2019, and the district identified several facilities that were nearing the end of life or in need of significant repair or upgrades. The good news is the Adventure Center was not identified for replacement, but over the next 10-year period, the building has been identified for renewal. The district currently carries a renewal backlog of roughly $177,000. And then you can see that also from 2017 to 2020, additional expenses are projected for renewal. And those expenses have, those upgrades and renewal costs have not been met by the district to date. So it's also really important to note that this expenditure does not improve the functionality or increase the capacity of the Adventure Center. It just keeps the asset in good standing. So in terms of a visioning process moving forward, the district, sorry, district staff proposed a visioning process with Tourism Squamish and supported by the Squamish Chamber to revitalize the center. So the Adventure Center revitalization project includes the development of a vision and subsequent revitalization plan for the building to be developed between the winter 2020 and fall 2021. And should a final plan be approved and funding is received, revitalization could commence in late fall, early winter 2021. Revisioning would commence with a review of the work commissioned by the Squamish Sustainability Corporation in 2019, which reviewed and recommended potential operating models for the Squamish Adventure Center. And this included a review of best practices from other communities and an evaluation of business models for operating the building as a self-sustaining center. Should the district not be successful at obtaining funding from the Tourism Dependent Communities Fund, staff again recommend pursuing this revisioning exercise and planning exercise regardless in order to prepare for future funding opportunities. So finally, to guide the development of an application to the Tourism Development Communities Fund and visioning work to be undertaken by district staff, Tourism Squamish, and the Chamber, district staff with Tourism Squamish develop the following set of guiding principles in priority order for council's consideration. And these principles consider the goals and objective of each respective organization and their connection to goals and objectives identified for the Tourism Dependent Communities Fund. Specifically, when developing the principles with Tourism Squamish for council's consideration, the district applied the following lens: the recommendation that the center be developed as a tourism-oriented asset, that a vision would include tourism stakeholders, notably Tourism Squamish and the Squamish Chamber, that plans from respective organizations be considered, including integrated regional plans such as DBC's Sea to Sky Destination Development. So this is the first set of guiding principles that staff are proposing for council's consideration. The first one is to revitalize the building as a tourism-oriented asset. This is a recommendation of the 2019 work. Two, to strive to achieve ongoing building operations, which are cost-neutral or profit-generating. So future recommendations for the building would use objective approaches, such as pro forma statement development, to determine the potential to create a cross-neutral, cost-neutral, profit-generating building, and also consider other factors outside of operational costs, such as respective organizational impact. And this could result in a plan by which is supported that is not cost-neutral or profit-generating in the end, but that would be a consideration and a decision that council could make at that time. Three is strive for highest community benefit by supporting longer visitor stays and repeat visitation to increase local tourism revenue. So drawing specifically on Tourism Squamish's objectives, a future vision would consider the goal of generating high-yield travelers, or rather those that stay longer, spend more, and become lifetime visitors to Squamish. Convey the Squamish brand promise. Any future vision for the building would work to convey the unified Squamish brand, known today as Hardwired for Adventure, while rebranding would not be a focus of this work. Consideration of the brand in today's context and any recommended updates could be considered. Five, align to the District of Squamish and Tourism Squamish Society strategic guiding documents. So related district plans included but not limited to official community plan goals, objective policies would be considered, and as I mentioned, Tourism Squamish's strategic plan and the Sea to Sky Destination Development Plan. And facilitate Squamish Nation's participation, the revisioning of the building and its operations. So identified in District Tourism Squamish and the Sea to Sky Destination Goals and Plans, a district with Tourism Squamish and the Chamber would facilitate a process by which Squamish Nation could participate in the visioning of the building. This could result in a variety of outcomes, and that would be decided should Squamish Nation want to participate and in which way. Seven, to review existing tenancy agreements. So we would review existing tenancy agreements against proposed vision and plan for the building and communication with existing tenants would continue to be led by district real estate. Eight, consider the accessibility, diversity, and inclusion by incorporating seven principles of a universal design. Nine, within-scope retrofit building to maximize energy efficiency, reduce emissions, and minimize associated environmental impacts. So considering that the initial funding envelope available is $1 million, visioning and subsequent planning will first consider this for the center upgrades. If more substantial upgrades could be completed to improve retrofit of building but are not within the initial scope, those would be identified for future consideration. Ten, showcase the Adventure Center as a wood-first building, providing climate benefits through its embodied carbon construction. So the Adventure Center is constructed of sustainable Douglas fir timber and has been showcased by the Canadian Wood Council and Forestry Innovation Investment for its unique design. The Tourism Dependent Communities Fund indicates that if proposed works for a building or addition to a building that increases the size of the building, the applicant must consider wood as the primary building material pursuant to the objectives of the Wood First Act. And 11, finally, consider connection to adjacent public space and infrastructure. So through this process, we would include working with planning and communications, consideration for the adjacent parking area, forestry center, gateway to Rose Park, and the improved connectivity of the facility to downtown via Rose Park. So finally, we have a recommendation that the District of Squamish endorsed these principles as presented at the November 10th, 2020, committee of the whole meeting, to guide a visioning process in support of revitalizing the Squamish Adventure Center as a tourism-oriented asset. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you could. There we go. Okay. So I'm getting some of this mic. Counsel, Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, just a point of clarification. Is the proposal that the application to the Tourism Independent Community Fund would just be for this visioning process, or would it include an envelope for actual works?
No, the intention would be that the visioning process would be part of the application, but it's for actual upgrades to the center.
Great. And just to follow up, so the whatever envelope that might be for upgrades to the center, would that be informed by the study that was completed in 2019? Or how did that study get incorporated into this?
So the visioning process, essentially, we would use the work that was done in 2019 as consideration for this visioning process moving forward. And then that visioning process would then incorporate a plan for the center, which would then be presented for approval to council, and then subsequently would be funded by the Tourism Dependent Communities Fund. The funding, though, is only for up to $1 million, so it has to be within that scope. We could look at a project which is out of scope, but would have to be funded elsewhere as part of this process, like a longer-term project, and use the initial $1 million for the initial funding, but we would need, I would guess, direction to do so. At this point, it's planned sort of to be within scope.
Are you good, Counselor Stoner? I think I sounded that was it? Counselor Anderson? Counselor Anderson, go ahead.
Firstly, we have some skilled people in our facilities management roles within the district staff. Are those persons, or would they be fully integrated into this process of review? They may have some advice regarding technical considerations. This building has a very large heating bill, for example, that has been reviewed in the past. Will that team be engaged in this process?
Definitely, if we are planning upgrades to a district facility, we would be looking for expertise within our own district staff and as well, I would assume, if need be, externally. I can't really speak specifically for the department heads. I'm not sure if somebody wants to weigh in. If Gary or Natasha want to weigh in, but we would be using the expertise of the district alongside with the vision of the partners.
Thank you. I'd like to turn to the recommendations, and in particular, number seven, review existing tenancy agreements. What I'm looking for is a confirmation or not as to whether different programming might be considered, different scenarios for use of space, and I'll just throw it out as an idea or a concept, repurposing some of the office space. Is the process open to considering that type of repurposing? I don't see it explicitly in the recommendations.
Everything is, through the chair, everything is on the table in terms of, in terms of the building, its configuration, its programming. The idea is that we'll use the principles to guide the process, but we'll be looking at the entire functionality and service model for the building. So yes, you could see ultimately offices disappear. You could see, you know, things move around, and you could see a change in the services. And the partners have been open to that idea, but we want it to be a collaborative process by which we're using those principles and the strategies of each organization to make the best decision.
Thank you. Finally, recommendation 11, consider connection to adjacent public space and infrastructure. And Kate Mulligan, you've given a list of all these public realm assets, Smokeless Park, Rose Park, proximity to this, proximity to trails. My question is, will you be reaching out to the nonprofit organizations and businesses in the area? And I can think of Trail Society, the Carson Family, Forestry Center you've mentioned, but stakeholders in your, you've mentioned stakeholders. Would they be stakeholders that might be brought into the process?
Absolutely. Through the chair, we would be looking at engagement. First, the initial work will be to sit down with the partner organizations, including Tourism Squamish and the Chamber initially to work on visioning, and then we will be seeking feedback in a larger format engagement.
Thank you.
I have Counselor Ray, next. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. I guess when we're thinking of principles and you want principles to take away for this process, one of the ones that I'll suggest is that one of the principles be that the building remain a district-owned asset. And I don't want to completely close my mind to another alternative, but I've heard of a whole bunch of different things in the past, everything from a car dealer to a restaurant and so forth, that would be appropriate for that site. But I think my feeling now is that it should stay owned by the district as a district facility so that we have control going into the future. And I agree with the other principles, tourist-oriented. And for me, it's kind of a very strategic entry point for our community. And so I don't think I'd want to give up control of that. I'll leave it for other counselors to comment on that.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Any others looking to, Counselor Pennington?
Yeah, thank you. So with the idea that one of the end goals is to boost tourism, at least in terms of repeat visits and longer visits, you know, we know, I guess there's questions about the climate sustainability of tourism and how many places are doing it today. And so when I saw the piece, the recommendation about the building being energy efficient and so on, I guess for me, that's the smaller piece of the puzzle. And the bigger piece is, if we are driving more tourism, how is that sustainable from a climate perspective? And I don't know that this project should solve all the problems with tourism sustainability, but I think it needs to pay some attention to it, to the degree it's driving new tourism, and how is it part of that, that change in how we do tourism? That's the one item. The other one, it's somewhat related. We've had conversations about how there's all sorts of people coming here, but infrastructure is lacking. And so, and it may be often on provincial parkland in terms of bathrooms and those sorts of facilities. But if we are thinking about this is another tool to drive even more tourism after we come out of COVID, how are we balancing that with the infrastructure to support that tourism in a way that works for everyone? And to my mind, that's another principle somehow. I don't know how we word either of those as principles, but those are two things that are on my mind.
So, if I may, thank you, Chair. And Leslie may want to, or Toren may want to weigh in on this question. But in terms of how do we ensure that we're thinking about sustainability overall for the tourism industry? And I think one of the guiding principles is kind of taking care of that to an extent. And that's really where we're going to use things like our objectives and goals within our official community plan, but also Sea to Sky, the Sea to Sky Destination Development Strategy. And so that's really employing the work that's already been done to date around our climate goals and climate ambitions. And so when I think about the building's renewal and the programming that would subsequently happen in that building, I'm guessing that, and I don't want to speak on behalf of Tourism Squamish, but much of their work in terms of the type of visitor that they're trying to attract and their destination management and development strategies will focus on that, that long-term sustainability. So Leslie and Toren may have something to add. And in terms of the infrastructure lacking with respect to driving more tourism or more demand, I think what's important to note is that it's not necessarily a sheer number game for tourism demand. It's actually the qualified visitors. So it's actually the who is coming and who Tourism Squamish is working to attract. And I think that those, those visitors would better reflect, I think, and understand and follow the idea around destination management and sustainability.
Thank you.
I don't know if they want to say something.
Can I just add something?
That's.
Yes, my video is not working. Yeah, I mean, I think from Tourism Squamish's perspective, we, we're interested in educating the tourists when they come into the building. And I think a big part of that education is around sustainability and sustainable practices that our members are participating in. So to me, part of this visioning process is about looking at sustainable practices that we can help showcase that we're emphasizing within our community, as well as supporting our members to look at how they can continue to build on their sustainable practices as well. So I just thought I'd add that piece.
Counselor Pennington, follow.
Yeah, just add, you know, so it sounds like we are paying attention to the things I raised in different ways, and that's fantastic. I'm glad to hear that. I still think, even if we're already doing it, it's still worth articulating as part of the principles. I still think, even if we're already doing it, it's still worth articulating as part of the principles. And we can say, hey, we're already doing this. But that's great. But in my mind, just sort of having that framing is useful. My two cents anyways.
Okay, seeing no other feedback, I'll take the opportunity myself. In the document of those principles, there was the word strive and in a couple of the points. And I just wanted to dig a little bit on that one. The one is the sort of the cost neutrality or generation of revenue through the facilities. And I understand that this is about setting out to do some work and to, you know, strive to some answers, to use the same term. But when will this come back? When this comes back to us at some point, which is what was mentioned in the presentation, is that where the sort of the more granular decisions will be made on council's behalf? I think there might be some views around the table on those particular pieces. I want to make sure that we, that this isn't us doing that now, but that's in the future. Is that right, Ms. Mulligan? Or can you speak to it?
That is correct. The work hasn't been done yet in order to determine whether or not we can achieve cost neutrality or a revenue-positive situation for the building. So the revisioning work and substantial planning will be in order to do that. And we're going to try to take as an objective approach as possible and also not just look at, you know, one factor, which is cost of operations, but also, you know, what are others, I guess, considerations? Whether that would be social or environmental impacts that the building has and its services.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Counsel, oh, yes, Counselor Stoner, go ahead.
Yeah, just one more clarifying question in terms of process. It said spring 2021 for options, drafts, and review. And then fall 2021 for finalizing the plan. That puts us in line for consideration in the 2022 budget, correct? For implementation?
That would be correct. For the funding, the purpose of the funding, which we will be returning to council to request authorization to apply, we have to have the building ready to actual do, sorry, to complete upgrades, the plan has to be ready by December 2021. So the actual work would take place subsequent to that. And I believe the entire project needs to be completed by end of 2020. Are we, Leslie, is that correct? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So counsel, the the motion. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Oh. Sorry, my tab is gone. Does someone have the motion? I would like to move it. Staff recommendation, Counsel French?
Yeah, that the District of Squamish endorsed the principles as presented at the November 10, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting to guide a visioning process in support of revitalizing the Squamish Adventure Center as a tourism-oriented asset. I'll move that.
Thank you. Do you have a second, or Counselor Anderson seconds? Would anybody like to speak to it? Counselor Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, I'd just like to briefly echo Counselor Race's suggestion that we, or I'd just like to support it anyway, that the Adventure Center should remain under district control, if you like. The early years, as some of us will remember, of that facility was a big gulp for the community. It was an expensive building, all told, around $6 million, including the added connection to the highway. But that's behind us now. We made that commitment, and we hung with it. And I think that's just simply a, we made a big investment on the part of the community. And I just wanted to clear my sympathy with Counselor Race's suggestion and offer that for the consideration of the team ongoing.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. I have Counselor Stoner, and then Counsel French.
Thank you. I'm happy to support this motion at this time and the guiding principles for the visioning exercise. To my council colleagues' points previous in terms of ownership, I think that that's what this exercise is going to try and establish is if we can come up with a model that makes sense for us to maintain ownership, I'm hesitant to put that forward immediately as something that we're striving to do. Because I don't want to come to the 2022 budget and see that we're still probably investing $100,000 a year without a clear plan for that to transition to a cost-neutral or for-profit model. So I'm happy to support this in terms of the principles that we have set out here for the renewal process. And I look forward to the work that will be done in order to re-envision what this building might look like and appreciate the time and effort of Tourism Squamish and our staff to do the work that needs to be done in order to get us there to that stronger vision. So thank you.
Seeing no further comment. Counselor Penningill? Oh, sorry. I actually had Counselor French first. Sorry. Sorry, Counsel French, then Counselor Penningill, and then we'll get to some voting.
Okay, good. Thank you. Just reflecting back on Counselor Anderson's comments about the lead-up to the construction of the building in the early days, there definitely were some members of our community that were skeptical about the future success of the building. And I'm sure there are some people out there who are saying, I told you so, in looking at the amount of subsidy that goes into that facility every year. So I support where we're going with this and the work that has been done to get us here today. Because I think that this is maybe a little bit overdue in getting this building to perform to what I think is its full unrealized potential. So I'm looking forward to where this takes us next and what we get out of the exercise ahead of us.
Thank you, Counsel French. Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thank you. I was debating whether or not I would try an amendment to get those other recommendations added. I'm not sure I would have support for that to be explicitly added at this point. But it does also sound like those items are on the radar. And just like with whether or not we will be comfortable subsidizing the building into the future, I will sort of look to the outcomes of this visioning to judge, you know, the sustainability impacts and those things of this project. So I will support this as is and look forward to continuing the good work that we are doing on these topics. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be supporting this motion. I think this is important work and has been a long time coming as the various iterations of the Adventure Center have sort of run their course. So I look forward to this being the next chapter. And yeah, the output of the work, I'll be here to help sort through it. So with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, if any. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
So counsel, we have a motion. Motion to close.
No, oh, yes.
Is that, is that correct? Is that where we're going next? Sorry, Robert?
Yep.
Motion to close. Counselor Stoner moved, and second one, Counsel Race. I think, I think we should, how long do we need? Is 10 minutes enough? Counsel, move to the other, move to the other platform.
I'm seeing nods all around the staff.
Thank you.
We need to vote.
Oh, sorry. Motion to close. All those in favor, opposed, if any. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's do 3:45.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll see you back on the other platform. Thanks.